I mean, we're probably gonna, well. Like, maybe swap four A and B. I should do the consent agenda first.
Right.
Swap four A and B.
I don't know how I just spoke the other.
What, what do you think of swapping, swapping for A and B? And talking to the fire code with all, with all the fire district here, or do we just swap that and then do the thousand element update? We were having some difficulties with the Zoom presentation here in town center. Welcome, we'll call to order and please call the roll.
Councilmember Hefty.
Here.
Councilmember Haskell.
Your councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff.
Here.
Mayor Als.
Here. Okay, our first item will, our second item will be oral communications. Anyone wishing to address the council on an item not on the agenda tonight may do so now. Are there hands up? I see one hand here in the room. Karen Askew, go ahead.
Hello. Is it on? Is it on?
Yes.
I have two things. The first is a public service announcement from the Parks and Rec Committee. Get ready for the town picnic and the zots tots, zots to tots fun run this Saturday, or Saturday, September 23rd. The race starts at 10:00 AM from the zots parking lot and the picnic will run from 11:00 to 1:00 at our town center. Should I stand away from them? This action packed event will bring family and friends together for a day of outdoor fun. Lace up your running shoes or hop on your bike for the exciting race or simply enjoy a leisurely stroll along our picturesque Portola Road. Afterward, indulge in a delicious bite to eat and enjoy the activities. Kids' games include face painting, inflatables, pony rides, and a petting zoo. Climb on the fire engine and enjoy a local band, The Salty Lips. But wait, there's more. Speaking of Salty Lips, all race participants, that means you guys, town council, will get a free soft serve cone from Mr. Softy at the end of the race. Okay. So. And next, changing the subject. I serve as the Hawthorns liaison for our Parks and Rec Committee. And the liaisons have not been contacted by MidPen in quite a while. So I recently asked MidPen how our role fits into the process. And what I was told is that MinPen's goal is to finalize the preferred conceptual design alternative in collaboration with its newly formed Public Access Working Group. From there, it will be presented to MidPen's Planning and Natural Resources Committee, which would be a Public Brown Act meeting. Following the presentations to this Planning and Natural Resources Committee, MidPen will then present the concept to the Portola Valley Committee Liaisons. And that feedback will be brought back to MidPen for consideration. And to me, this process takes Portola Valley's input fairly late into the game. The proposed workflow doesn't seem to easily allow for feedback from all Portola Valley residents prior to a final finalized conceptual design. The next Public Access Working Group meeting is October 26th and will focus on parking and driveway options. I don't believe this is a public meeting. It's an ad hoc committee. A big concern of many residents is that all parking for Hawthorns, at least right now, what they're talking about, would be via Alpine Road, which is our major evacuation route. And that area may have additional parking and traffic challenges, given the planned development that's all between Roberts and Mathhorst. There are 16 members on the Working Access Group, which do include Portola Valley residents Sarah Wernikoff, Karen Vatra, and Helen Quinn, as well as Los Trancos residents Charlie Prins and David Smirnoff. They're all great representatives of our town. What I would like to see is some formal channel of communication in which residents can provide their opinion to those mentioned five members, so those members can best represent Portola Valley. And Sarah, I'm hoping that you and I can meet separately and figure out how to create an effective mechanism for the resident feedback that can be shared with this Working Access Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, I see, okay, I see Anne Copsill has her hand up. Go ahead, Anne. Then we'll go, I see four hands on Zoom. We'll go to those next.
Hello, Anne Copsill. Our planning director Laura Russell has resigned, and I think this is her last meeting. She's not here, but I think she's on Zoom. So I wanted to give a shout out and talk about her. I'm a resident and I was on the ad hoc housing element committee. We had a lot of meetings and a lot with Laura. And I'm also on the planning commission. We had a lot, a lot of meetings with Laura. So I think I'm the resident that spent the most time with Laura. I could go on and on about all her good traits. I'd like to tell one story. When I was the chair during many of these meetings with the housing element, we were, we had so much material to go through, just dense pack agendas. And then we had a calendar deadline. We couldn't just add more meetings, right? And I always wanted the meetings to end at 11:00. They started at 7:00, like yours do. Me and other people turn into pumpkins, the public all leaves. I just really wanted to get them into four hours. On one particularly dense meeting, I called Laura to talk about it. How on earth were we going to get through all this material? So we brainstormed, I'm like, how much time do you really need for the staff report? Do we have to do this item? Can we push that to later? And one of my ideas was to, of course, get input from the public on every topic. That's good. But I wanted to cut the time down from our habitual three minutes per person, per topic, down to two minutes or one minute. This could save a lot of time. And Laura understood what I was saying and agreed that it could cut the time down. And Laura, like always, if me and the other commissioners wanted to do something, she'd find a way to make it work as good as possible. But when I really pushed her for advice, she was like, hmm, I don't think you should cut the resident input time down. She said, you know, Portola Valley just really, really values the public input. And I think if I was proposing, I'd announce this at the beginning of the meeting. She said, you know, I just don't think that would start it off on a good foot. She, her advice was like, find somewhere else to be efficient. This really struck me. Here, I'm the resident and I was the one suggesting, can we make this more efficient with less time per resident on every topic? And she was the professional advising, no. And I know a lot of you aren't here at past 11 o'clock, but there are some residents that after 11, that's the time they just start railing into the staff, telling Laura she's bad, unethical, or staff is bad. I mean, it's really bad in my mind, but here Laura was advocating for keeping the long resident speaking time, even though it was going to be unpleasant and aggravating to many of us. So, boy, Laura, you have just set a really high bar. And as a resident volunteer, you know, many people ask me during this housing thing, like, why do you do that? I would never be put in that position. But, you know, one of the joys is working with staff that's just really competent and just knows their stuff, can lay out the questions and this complicated stuff and explain what the residents need to decide and what the parameters are. I mean, it's been a joy to work with you. Really gonna miss you. And as my beloved town, I feel like we owe you a huge debt of gratitude. This housing thing was both contentious and complicated. That just adds up to just so difficult and you were just amazing at it. So we're really gonna miss you, Laura.
Thank you, Anne. Senator Laura, thank you. Okay, thank you. I see four hands on Zoom. David Cardinal, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is Rita Comas Whitney.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I want to say, thank you for taking my comment and welcome to our new town manager and our other new town staff. You know, public input during these meetings is important since we don't always get follow up when we do send messages or try to reach the town hall office like in the past couple of days or looking at the current hours on the website, which haven't been updated and not getting return calls. So during these moments, public comment is important because at least it's being recorded. And even if we're asking the same question for many months. And in that, I want to know if there is an update to the audit. At the last finance meeting, there was a timeline that was shown and it had different dates on it. And I was wondering if, you know, I don't see another finance meeting. Maybe there is one on the schedule now and I didn't, I missed it for those updates. Or do we just reach out to the chair to get that information? And, you know, how do we, how do we get those updates? And also I have a great concern about the safety element, which was proposed to be done in the month of October 2023, especially after the 329 meeting, when there were different things from our wonderful Woodside Fire Protection District in their letter. And some of those particular items were said to be going to be moved over to our safety element, which, and then those would be done in October. So, welcome, our new town manager. You know, love to meet up with you and look forward to spending time and talking to you in the immediate future. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. We'll go back to David Cardinal. David, go ahead.
Okay, I think this is working better. Can you hear me okay? I hate to ask, but.
Yes.
Right. Dave Cardinal, 35-year resident of Portola Valley. As Anne's already told us sadly, tonight is Laura's last town council meeting as her planning director. She's provided us with an amazing five years of service in that role. And unfortunately, I think it's person to move on. Anne's story told us quite a bit about Laura's ethics and integrity, but there's more to it than that. While most of us know how special Laura was as our planning director, it's still pretty easy to take her unique combination of talents for granted. She combines an incredibly deep wealth of understanding of how planning works in California. I mean, encyclopedic, as far as I can tell, with a gift for achieving rapport with others, which I only wish I had, I suppose, as well as having the patience of a saint. I particularly value her ability to take naughty issues like projects versus programs, which are hard to explain, or the difference between strategic and tactical comments to HCD and explain them in a way that makes them easy to understand. That's a gift because those things are thrashed around all the time, over and over again, with misinformation. And, you know, she cuts the heart of it and I think really is able to explain what's going on. I'm sure she'll be a success at whatever she tackles next, and I certainly wish her all the best. But thank you.
Thank you, David. Carolyn Vertonghen has her hand up. Carolyn, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, thank you. I really love the enthusiasm from Karen. And I hope that all new staff and town council members and our new manager will join that eventful or that very, you know, organized event on September 23rd. So I would like to also thank Mayor Als for finally recognizing the the importance of the collaborative effort among several town committees. Just like Mr. Cardinal said, he's a 35-year resident, we're 29, and we're very committed to this town. So I hope that staff also recognize that we're not Menlo Park, we're not Los Altos. We're very unique. We have a general plan. We have several elements and we have our own municipal code. So I hope they will get an understanding of that and really come to our meetings to understand, because there's so many issues that are ongoing and hopefully we can resolve them together and at a speedy timing. And I also wondered, I mean, I like the collaborative effort, but I wonder if this new meeting that, that is going to be held on September 21st between 1:00 and 3:00 is a little rushed. You know, many of the members were not involved in so many projects, even though we asked for it. And so only a few residents have been following many committee men, many committees meetings and town council meetings. Some of it we're still going to understand because it's very complicated. And it was not really updated. So, that said, Mayor Als, if that meeting will go through, please give us the projects that are going to be, going to be addressed that Friday afternoon. So we can provide you with the input and help our other committee members with the input on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Kristi Corley has her hand up. Kristi, go ahead.
Thank you. I am a 25-year-old resident and I had the pleasure of working and interacting with Jennifer Torres, our new clerk this week. And I wanted to thank you for being efficient and action-oriented and improving procedures and processes. I also look forward to the new park in our town, which is 79 acres. I'd like to see all Hawthorne meetings on our town calendar to continue to educate residents of the upcoming meeting. I also, in addition to Karen Askew's request, request all the same things she asked for. And that is to form a committee now of residents so we can have input before the final decisions are made. So I'm concerned about the proposal of parking at Hawthorns, which could be 20 parking places to the left of the Hawthorne driveway, 20 parking places to the right of the Hawthorne driveway on Alpine Road across from Alp Roberts Market Parking. This is our scenic corridor. This is the proposed, one of the posed locations. And if this was to occur, the oak trees would probably be removed due to safety reasons. They will also put a bathroom located at the parking area, which we welcome because we've had Alp houses down by Little League Field. And no longer can bikers use the Robert store for their bathroom due to overflows. The current parking for Hawthorne site tours is up the driveway, turn left, go down into a goalie, of which also holds 40 parking places. And it's a better location for the parking. And in my opinion, this site is more desirable for the residents of Portola Valley. We came here to see nature, feel nature, and not to see parking lots on our scenic corridor. I encourage the residents to attend the next meeting on October 26th, which I confirmed today with their clerk that we are invited. I also attended two-hour meeting and another four-hour tour. So I'm about six hours into learning everything I can about the site, which I'm very excited about. I would like to request the formation of the resident committee right now, because we're deciding on parking bathrooms, dogs at the site, bikes at the site. Where did the entrances and exits go on Alpine Road where there's many accidents? At this time, I've seen many at Los Trancos, and that is a downhill from Roberts. Anyway, I know I'm going overtime, but that is my comment. And I look forward to continuing to be involved with the Hawthorns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. I see no other hands on Zoom. Are there any other comments here in the schoolhouse? Don't see any. And we'll move on to our next item, item three, which is the consent agenda. Public may comment on the consent agenda. Council members may pull items from the consent agenda. Are there public comments on any item on the consent agenda? Yes, Carolyn Vertonghen has her hand up on Zoom. Carolyn, go ahead.
I apologize. I could not find the agenda anymore. But I do have a concern. When you look at the warrant list, as we have asked, and many vendors have done this already, they have given us more details of the work that was done. I'm very concerned, you know, with this housing element and the amount that we pay. It's over $100,000 again. Have staff looked at this? It looks like, you know, there's double billing. It's January, February, March. Again, January, February, March, we don't even know what they're doing. We have not seen an update. And then, of course, something, there's several consultants, including Mr. Krupka. So this month, the warrant list that you're going to approve, again, ask, ask for $4,000. And I don't understand why he is not submitting detailed reports to the BBTS Committee or at least the town liaison or the town council. We would like to see improvements, so please ask him to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Other comments on the consent agenda? I see Rita Combs's hand up. Rita, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. My comment is on the two contracts that are part of the consent agenda. Those two contracts, you know, are concerned to me, not because of those items aren't needed to be done and the money needed to be spent, but without the past audits being done and the financial books not being closed for the past couple of years. It's just really hard to spend, to see money spent without closing the book to know how much money we have when we're pulling money out of the reserves every month. And the items aren't being coded to what projects they're being spent for, which then makes it harder to run reports at the end of the month. I'm not privy to how things run in the office, but with open.gov, you can code the different projects associated with the different people and the contracts. And, you know, it just seems that we're, since we're pulling money out of the reserves and there's no update on the financials, it's just hard to see every month a new contract being approved. When, how are we, how can we pay for these things? I know we need to do them, but how are we paying? Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I see no other hands up on Zoom. Anyone in the schoolhouse with a comment on the consent agenda? Okay, I see no more comments. Does any councilor wish to pull an item from consent? Sorry, Cindy, is it?
Yes.
Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, I just wanted to point out, and then based on the public comment, I just wanted to provide a couple of additional pieces of information. In reference to our warrant list, all of our warrant lists and all of the invoices paid and approved have all gone through a review process through all of our internal staff. All the directors review and approve. And we make sure that the invoices are revised if there are any issues with the invoices. So I just wanted to address that as well. And I just did also want to point out just a slight discrepancy in the dates. That's a small glitch in our system, but we have worked on that and that will be all straightened out in the next warrant list.
And just to be clear, the dates of the warrant lists are incorrect on the agenda. Is that, that's the?
Yeah. Yes.
We did notice that earlier today.
Yes.
Thank you, Cindy. Does anyone want to pull an item from?
I want to pull item C. A little contract amendment number three agreement, zoning code update consultant. Please do what?
Okay, anything else anyone wants to pull?
I have a quick comment on the minute, so A.
I have a quick uh comment on the minutes, so A.
Okay.
And and let me just confirm, Mary wanted to pull C, was it? D, I have a quick comment.
All right, and then we're pulling three, so we'll just. Okay, uh, let's just do the minutes. Go ahead and.
Yeah, this is really quick. On uh, I had pulled item three B. This is on the second, the first page. And then when it says Vice Mayor Wernicke made a motion seconded by Councilmember Huffy, you just need to put in on three B there because it's not clear what was being approved. So that's mine.
Uh, any other corrections to the minutes? Uh, with that, then I could take a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We do roll call vote or can we do?
Councilmember Hefty?
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Mayor Alves?
Hi. Item three B, uh, the warrant lists, uh, was the one that wasn't pulled, but I'll take a motion to approve that. So move.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hefty?
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Mayor Alves?
Hi. All right, uh, item three C. Mary, do you want to start?
Well, it it is a big number. It continues to be a big number, uh, and it can sit, continues to be a very confusing subject. Uh, this is the contract amendment number three agreement for zoning code update consultant, Lisa Wise. Um, I would feel, just reading through this, I started thinking, God, so grateful we have a a a consultant to do this. It's gonna be very confusing. And then I thought, what would be more useful would be if we had a resident who was also involved in this process. And I was wondering if there's any possibility that we could see our our way with this contract to include one of, hopefully, one of the planning commissioners who will be having to deal with this subject, getting up to speed with the consultant so that you have two people who are actually educated and are ready to translate because a lot of this zoning stuff is way above my head. And if I were on the planning commission, I would be going, please give me a chance to learn something before somebody presents this to me. So um, that's what my thought on this was. Uh, it's sort of like a limited partnership. Uh, you go in with the money and somebody else comes out with, and you get the education when you come out. It would just be nice to be able to get the education at the same time that everybody else is getting the education and get the feedback and understand why things have to be the way they are in order to be able to move forward. So my proposal was that uh that uh we look to the planning commission and see if the planning commission would be willing to um have one of their members share some of the the responsibility here for getting educated by the consent.
Other, other questions or comments on?
Um, I guess I have a question for Laura on it, which is more, um, are all of these activities reasonably likely to be needed? Uh, can you characterize how you came up with this set of tasks so we can understand, you know, how likely uh some of this is? There's no doubt there's a lot of work here. Uh, but I, you know, two public meetings, two adoption hearings. Is that uh reasonably conservative? Or are we likely to go over? I'm just looking for your best input.
Um, we think that all of the things that we have outlined in this scope are necessary um to be able to complete it. We think this is a reasonable scope to be able to complete the work that's in front of us. The planning commission has already made significant progress um on this work before, so we need to resume that work, carry it forward, and then look at the objective standards, which is the new piece um that will be coming forward. So we have tried to be realistic, and we have tried to be very sensitive to the budget. And so, you know, there will be a need to sort of balance, um, you know, the interest in public participation and the cost of doing that as the town moves forward.
Thank you. And my only other question is for Mary. When, when you're talking about, what would the planning commission members do? I'm I'm a little confused. On the budget or on the substance?
No, I'm sorry, with the consultants, with with uh Lisa Wise.
A meeting that's already happening anyway, as opposed to a special meeting.
Yeah, not an extra meeting, but just an opportunity to be part of the process so that there's somebody else who knows what's going on, who will be, who will be looking at the, at the material and translating hopefully.
Isn't, isn't that what the planning commission does in the, when they're, when we're having these meetings in the first place?
Well, there's a a hundred and many thousand dollars uh being spent on educating uh staff and on on educating the consultants. I think that the residents can share some of that education beforehand.
Are there other comments on three C? Okay, um, if there's none of the comments, I can take a motion.
Uh, do you need to um have a discussion?
Well, yes.
Yes, okay, that that's what we're supposed to do now.
Um, you know, yeah, we can.
Yeah.
I will, I will, I'll, I'll open up public comments again. Yeah, we took some, but I'll pick it one more time. Additional public comments on item three C. Okay, I don't see any hands up here in the room. Okay, so yes, we can discuss and then uh make a motion.
Just, just so I'm clear, are you looking for a motion to approve the contract or a motion to approve adding a planning commissioner to this process? For both?
Oh, I, I was, uh, well, I, I, I guess it depends on what people feel like doing. Um, I, I'm not sure I understand what's being proposed with this. I mean, I, I, I just, I mean, we hired the consultants because we need outside expertise, and planning commission, you know, is is going to be working with them through the course of our normal process. So I just not sure what we're adding here. I feel like trying to educate a planning commissioner, well, one, it's, it's, I think it's a little hairy asking to educate planning commissioners on very technical things uh outside of policy decisions they're making, but also I just feel like it's gonna add more time to the process, not not simply my, my two cents. But I, I mean, I.
Yeah, I guess my sense is there's two public meetings and there's two adoption hearings. So we do feel like it's gonna get aired. So, yeah, it's, it, I guess it's not clear to me. Having, you know, a ride along necessarily buys us very much because then you get into all the scheduling issues and preparation to bring that person along because it's not just listen, it's you gotta actually educate them, and that, that's gonna cost money, which I, I, other than the four meetings that we already have scheduled. I mean, that seems sufficient to me.
I, I mean, this is a lot of money. You know, I think that's what's underlying the, the, the questioning. And I don't doubt Laura's good judgment about this is necessary, so this isn't at all to question that. It is more an observation that in order to meet state-imposed requirements, we are continuing to accrue an enormous amount of debt. And we should use that very as best we can. But I do think we have to trust uh in the experts that have led us to this point and in Laura's good judgment to get us across the finish line. I think the only question is if this changes or even, you know, we get halfway into it, at some point, you have to say, is this, is this a waste of time? You know, I'm not there yet, but I will be there very soon because we, we keep trying. The goalposts just kept moving. It's a frustration. But, so I can see why Mary is kind of questioning, like, how can we make sure all this is needed? I'm at the point where we're so far into the process, and it's, you know, a little more effort after a lot of great effort is worth it to me. So I would just want to keep our eye on this and ask they have to come back to us um if there is a change in course or a yet another goalpost move. I think I would want to have a wholesome discussion at that point.
Well, just to be clear, though, this, this is the zoning changes for, I mean, we were always, we were always on the hook to do this. So this didn't, this, 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 I wouldn't call this, I mean, I, I, I know, I know what you're saying about the moving goalposts, and there's a whole nother process around that.
Exactly.
This one feels like something we had to do.
Yeah, no, I, I'm on board with that. I would support this.
And, and, yeah, the expensive amounting, I agree with you, but I also don't see an alternative, honestly.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think we have a consensus that we do need to modify this contract. In which case I could entertain a motion.
I, I would, uh, I'd like to, uh, in terms of wholesome discussion here, I'd like to again uh make a uh an effort to have people realize that this money is being spent by the residents, basically. And we should have the ability to be fully educated by that experience. There's, uh, and I, I think you're underrating the uh, the quality of the planning commission. For example, I think they're more than capable of making it more efficient, not less efficient. I think they can easily grasp these concepts, and they're, and they deserve at least to have a, come to them as a, as an opportunity. Guarantee you won't waste our time, but uh would you be interested in sitting in on some of these discussions? That's, they, they could even, you could even swear them to silence, you know, just so that they could actually hear a little bit more about how this sausage is made for this amount of money. My opinion.
Mayor, I still understand. What meetings do you think that the planning commissioner would go to that's not part of the adoption hearings and the public meetings? Like, you're, 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 it sounds like there's this cobble of people that are getting together to talk about this stuff, but that's, I mean, that's not what consultants do. They, you know, they, they have expertise in this stuff. Um, so I mean, maybe somebody could be there at the kickoff, but, but other than that, I mean, drafting an amendment, I mean, that's where you take your expertise and you put it on a piece of paper. It's not a roundtable. So that's why I'm confused, is I, I think there's gonna be ample places where the planning commission and the public will both get to hear what's going on here. This isn't magically gonna get to the end and then they're gonna say, here's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of stuff.
Well, it may only be two meetings, but two meetings would be a ton of proof.
Okay, but there's.
When they, with the kickoff happen to the consultants, that kind of thing.
But there's four meetings already scheduled in here as part of this cost.
Yeah, but there's gonna be other ones that happen in secret.
No, that doesn't feel to me the, the way consultants generally work. You hire them, it's like, it's like an attorney. You, you wouldn't say, well, I want to go sit in the attorney's office while they talk to you off.
But you're probably not gonna talk you out of the idea, but.
Okay, no, I, I'm just trying to understand. Yeah, no, I, I guess what I was trying to tease out is whether there's something I'm misunderstanding.
No, it's really just a question of there being somebody from the planning commission, and you can even think of it as a resource person for the planner, that they would have somebody in the planning, uh, in the, on the planning commission who you could say, gosh, this is a naughty question. Would you listen in and see what you think? You would actually have some involvement going, going forward. And it could be not used. It could be not useful. The process might go so quickly and beautifully and cheaply that you don't have any naughty uh problems. But we do have some pretty heavy uh, uh hitters on the planning commission, and I think we could really uh, we could, we could improve our process by, by using them during this, during this consulting. Doesn't mean you'd have to do it. Uh, it's just that, and it doesn't mean the planning commission wants to do it. The planning commission didn't want to do it. But I think they should have the opportunity to be able to consider it.
Well, from my perspective, it looks like you'd really be talking about somebody attending working meetings with town staff or something in that range. And personally, I would leave it up to the staff to figure out the most efficient way because they may actually look at it and say, giving a preview might work, but I, I would defer to the staff to do that.
I'm perfectly happy to go with that. I really just wanted to discuss it as a process.
I think, I think, I think Steph has heard your position on this, and I think that's, that's reasonable for them to consider putting some, some way to implement that. But without modifying, I mean, I, I think we'll roll with this contract. If that's the case, then I could entertain a motion to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hefty?
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Mayor Alves?
Hi. Thank you. Uh, three D.
And there's uh several contracts that are being replaced, I suppose, updated and replaced here. Uh, these are rather ministerial comments, but you're saying in the cover note, there are five contracts with three entities, and it says that they would expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The dates of the contract are June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. All of them need to be updated to reflect twenty twenty-four, unless I'm, let me know if I misread it. And then the contract with um Good City Company has a blank exhibit for the rate card, and that would concern me. I would, would have liked to have seen it. I know we're scrambling to do a lot quickly. Uh, but if somebody can assure me that the rate card is not surprisingly different than the current rate card, I would, I would take that and just make a recommendation that it be updated accordingly.
Oh, Laura, do you want to respond about?
Um, yes, so my apologies if there's a mistake on the date and the um lack of the attachment for the rate card. Um, I did have someone assist me with this who just unfortunately had a family emergency. Um, so this is just a small mistake that we made, so sorry about that. Um, the Good City rates are um consistent with the past increase, the past rates, but just include a normal CPI type of increase. Um, they're otherwise consistent. Um, and then the dates, um, the idea is for them to run um for the year, you know, and then have that little bit of extra time um to be able to extend them if we need to, um, like we've had to have that extra time this year. So that's the intent.
Yep, and, and like I said, those are all fine with me. I, I see, have no other issues. I just wanted to make sure those were attended to.
Other, uh, other questions or comments on item three D? If not, I could take a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve item three D.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hefty?
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Mayor Alves?
Hi. Thank you. Um, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Uh, one quick change, because we have several members of the fire district here tonight, and we want them to get back to their important work, we're going to switch, swap items four B and four A, and uh we'll do, we'll, we'll handle the fire, uh, the fire, the fire code first, and then we'll, we'll move the housing element to second. So the housing element and the post-adoption process get, get discussed together. So we're gonna move to item four B. Uh, I believe Don wanted to, is Don Bowler, Fire Marshal Bowler is making this presentation? Or is there a preface from staff or is it?
Uh, there is an introduction from staff.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, good evening again. Um, the substance of this item is really with the fire district and with the fire marshal, but I did want to provide some context, um, background and framework um to help you as you're thinking through um his comments and um thinking through any questions you may have for him. So first, I wanted to just explain that the adoption of the fire code is similar to the adoption of the building code. It comes out every three years, and it automatically goes into effect if the local jurisdiction doesn't take any other actions. And that every three-year cycle, um, those of us in the business often call the code cycle or the three-year code cycle. And so when that happens, local jurisdictions can adopt local amendments to that standard state code in order to respond to local conditions. And so, as you know, we have local amendments to our building code and have had local amendments to our fire code in the past. So what happens when these standard codes come out is the subject matter experts review them and propose those local amendments. So um, there's a little bit of background. A little over three years ago, when we did this in the last code cycle, it was a relatively simple, small number of local amendments. Um, we worked with the previous fire marshal in the town of Woodside, came up with some language together, but it was all very simple. Um, this time around, the fire district through the fire marshal wanted to have a more comprehensive update to the fire code to bring it. to the fire code to bring it up to standard with best practices. So that's why there's more content involved in this version than what councils have seen previously. So in terms of process, the fire district I'm sorry, is everything okay? Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. The fire district produced a draft and then received comments from Stanford University, from our own wildfire preparedness committee, from MROSD, town of Woodside, as well as our town staff. Myself, our building official and our previous town attorney all looked at the previous version of the code. In response to those comments, the fire district made significant changes. And so those are the versions that went to their board and are before the council tonight, that updated version. So I wanted to point out that at this point, after the fire district made significant changes, there seemed to be a little bit of a disconnect or a lack of shared expectations between the fire district and the wildfire preparedness committee. So I think there was a little confusion about the roles, communications and the next steps. So the fire district brought that revised version to their board where it was approved. And then each jurisdiction where the fire district provides services has to ratify it for it to apply locally. So that's the item that's before you tonight, is for the council to ratify or show your agreement that these local amendments should apply to the town. And just as a reminder, if there's no local amendments, then the state fire code otherwise applies, so the state fire code is less strict than these local amendments. So certainly, the fire district staff are the subject matter experts, and we defer to them and their expertise in most matters. We've provided our comments, which they have integrated, but the council has asked me, you know, how do we think about a fire code adoption? What are the types of things that we could be analyzing? Because you're not going to get in, obviously, on a line-by-line review of the fire code, it's, it's very highly technical. So some areas where the council might wish to engage with the subject matter in a way, or a way of thinking about it is to think about where are there significant changes from the previous code. You may want to think about where are the more strict requirements and kind of understand the cost benefit analysis, or is anything overly burdensome? You might want to think about how the code's going to be implemented, and you might want to really have a chance to reflect and talk to the fire marshal about the potential safety benefits of implementing this code. I also think there's an opportunity for clarification of expectations. The wildfire preparedness committee was really seeking to fulfill their duties in their review, they worked hard on it. And then it wasn't clear how that fit in with the fire district's process. So you may want to think about that, the role of the wildfire preparedness committee in the district, and, you know, give some feedback or thoughts or direction about how to help future efforts be more streamlined. So the chair of the wildfire preparedness committee would also like to speak tonight, and so if the mayor is open to it, it might be nice to call on her, Jennifer Hammer, as the first public comment member. And then the council and the public have, all have access to some kind of back and forth comments between the fire district and the wildfire preparedness committee, and so you can decide through your discussion how much you would like to get into those details. But we just wanted to provide that little bit of background, so the council's purview on something like this is usually at a high level, understanding the changes, understanding the cost benefits and implementation of the fire code. So that's what I wanted to say, to get the conversation started, and I'm very happy to hand it over to the fire marshal, so he can speak to the specifics.
Thank you, Laura. Fire Marshal, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Laurel. Laura, and I'm going to go ahead and have Kim go ahead and start into it, Kim is our new fire marshal for the fire district, and she will be answering some of the questions that were asked.
Good evening, everyone. So first, as Laura has already highlighted, you have a little bit of background. We just have some extra information that we'd like to part to you all to give you an understanding of what the ratification would mean, and as well as what we're proposing and why. The state fire marshal adopts building standards related to fire and panic safety. Those standards are contained in the California Building Standards Code and apply throughout the state. This is the state fire code. Under state law, the district may adopt building standards related to fire and panic safety that are more stringent, as Laura highlighted, than those in the state fire code when reasonably necessary due to local climatic, geological and topographic conditions. Ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty-three establishes more stringent building standards related to fire and panic safety and contains extensive findings that support the necessity for such standards due to local conditions. The findings and local building standards in ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty-three are based on expert analysis and review by the district's fire marshal and fire district staff with knowledge developed throughout years of training and experience, as well as consultation with neighboring jurisdictions. The standards in thirteen, twenty twenty-three are generally consistent with standards established in neighboring jurisdictions. The findings meet legal standards for sufficiency. I'm going to elaborate a little bit more on this, because I think it's a point that's really important for the people to understand. When Chief Bullard started with this ordinance, he did not, all the language that was put into this ordinance is actually in, language that's been in the ordinances for years. I have worked for most of, most jurisdictions here in the peninsula, all the way from San Bruno to Menlo Park, and now I'm with Woodside Fire. When I came to Woodside, I was actually very surprised when I read the ordinance, how quickly I read through it and how short it was, because it's enforcement set, I haven't, it's a very minimal, and I have been so used to the ordinances that are put through the entire county that have been there for years. And I'm talking for the last eleven years that I've been in prevention. So I'm used to standards that were already, that he is trying to bring up to standard here in Woodside, have been in existence for a long time, it's nothing new. It's also language that's been put, put forth by other fire marshals in other jurisdictions that are multi-jurisdictional. For example, San Mateo covers San Mateo, Foster City, Belmont, everyone's got multiple cities that they cover. And the fire marshals that have written these ordinances, they have come together and they have tried to collaborate and maintain consistency throughout the county, because two main things, one, because they're trying to maintain a level of consistency, makes it a lot easier for builders and developers that come into each of our jurisdictions to do construction and work and have the same standards already put forth. Of course, here in Woodside, because we're in Awui, there are some nuances that separate us a little bit more than other jurisdictions, because of the community we are in. However, what is in this ordinance, there are some areas that are less stringent than other ordinances adopted in the county, because they are specific to those communities. So that's where you'll find these different nuances. But I'd also like to highlight the fire marshals that have written these ordinances in our county that have been in effect for the last ten, eleven years, or the last two or three code cycles. They are fire marshals that are very active in the state, in the building commissions, standards commission, the state fire codes. They sit in a lot of committees, so they are very knowledgeable and experts in the fire service, and that's why they've written a lot of the information that they've added, these local amendments to, to support the fire code. So when Chief Bullard started to gather this all together, it was really pulled language from Menlo Park Fire, from San Mateo Consolidated Fire, from Central County Fire, from South City Fire. So it's not new language, it's just new language here, so I just wanted to expand on that, just so you all have an understanding kind of where this information comes from. The process for the adoption and consideration of ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty-three has been open and transparent with several meetings with representatives from the town, Portola Valley, the town of Woodside, the county of San Mateo, as well as public meetings before the district's board of directors. Extensive comments were received and certain modifications were made to the ordinance in response to those comments. The district understands that the town's wildfire preparedness committee does not recommend ratification by the town of ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty-three. The district appreciates the committee's input and concerns. The district also notes that it has provided extensive responses to comments the committee previously submitted to the district of, on ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty-three. In reviewing the material submitted to the committee, to the committee, to the town, the committee does not claim that the district's findings are unreasonable or arbitrary, and the committee does not claim that the local building standards related to fire and panic safety in ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty-three are unnecessary. Wildfires are destructive and inevitable, and the district reasonably determined that the building standards in ordinance thirteen, twenty-three are necessary to protect the public health and safety from such risks. The district respectfully requests the town to ratify ordinance thirteen, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three as submitted. The district will continue to meet with the committee, provide it with information and clarification, and answer its questions on implementation of ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty-three. So that's the legal verbiage of what we wanted to point out, but now I'd like to say some additional comments in your, while you decide and make your decisions on ratification. As I said before, I've been in prevention for almost twelve years, and I do it because it's a job that I value and it's an oath that I've taken to protect property, life, the environment, and that's what this ordinance is for. It's bringing up to a standard to protect the community members, to protect their homes and to protect the environment. And that's the only thing that's important to us when we take this oath, that this is what our goal is, this is all we're looking to do. And I know when it's a lot of information that's difficult to understand, that it does bring about, it brings a lot of question and concern. The district is happy and we are open to offering sessions after ratification of the ordinances that are coming through, so that we can invite residents who are interested in doing a question and answers and educational component to help them understand what it is exactly that is what we're looking for and what's going to be done to the environment and what's going to be required of them. Really, a lot of the things in the fire code itself is mainly to panic, to life safety and panic for the community. It's not just for residents, it's, a lot of it is for protection of our firefighters. It's for protection systems that are being built into commercial buildings. There's a lot of components in the fire code, it's not just vegetation, it's not just how it affects residents and residential construction. There's a lot more in there, because it pertains to everything being built, not just in Woodside, but in all our jurisdictions. So I just want to say to you, as an incoming fire marshal and looking at this fire code, frankly, when I first started, I was surprised at the size of the ordinance, and when Chief Bullard showed me the new ordinance that he was proposing, I thought to myself, oh, good, finally, we're actually bringing it up to like what everybody else is doing at this point, and and, but never did I think that when the comments started to come in, that there'd be so much concern, and they were all valid questions, and definitely things that we'd want to address and educate the people on, on what this all means. But I just wanted to assure that the community that we only are looking out for your best interest, just like we would protect our family. The community is a part of our family, and it's what we do to strive to protect our these people's lives and their homes and our firefighters, because a lot of these things in the fire code are to protect them during a wildfire, during a structured fire. So there's a lot of things in place, so much more than what sometimes people may think. And again, I just want to thank you all for the time that you've taken to listen to us today, and I hope that you take this consideration, we don't take it lightly, it's a very important subject matter to us, and we hope that you take this into consideration in ratifying this code. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've, we've provided you with everything. If there's any questions that you have of us, we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, we'll start with questions from the council for the fire marshal. Mary, do you? Greg.
Sure. You've taken the state code on a couple of definitional approaches and made it more stringent, and I noticed that Stanford had a similar question on the definition of hazardous vegetation. And, you know, at the end, there's also, I'm scrolling for it, it's a long, long, long document. So forgive me if I get this wrong. Yes, here it goes. And it's any other vegetation is determined by the fire code marshal. The breadth worries me, I mean, let me first say safety's our priority, and this is great to see moving forward. The questions I have go to specific interpretation and authority and understanding when it does and doesn't apply, so I have like five questions, and that's, that's one of them. How important is it to have that very broad approach there, and then there is hazardous vegetation in three oh four point one point two. The, you know, the Cal Fire says weeds, grass, vine and other growth capable of being ignited and endangering property shall be cut down, et cetera, so this is where it's actually used. And you've taken that language and, and broadened it out. In my perception, if that's the intent, like, let me understand why, and the the, the flexibility to designate any other vegetation as hazardous. Any comments would be welcome.
I think the biggest reason for that, by being broad, is that you would have to be too specific on too many, too many plants and too many topic areas to be that specific in the fire code. So that's why it's left up to the fire code edition, we're making a broad statement based on what the state says, weeds, grasses, vines, those kinds of things that are hazardous materials, but I don't think there's enough room there to absolutely specify every specific plant that is or is not fire resistant or fire, you know, hazardous vegetation, that would be the reason why.
It doesn't tie at the end back to the ignition risk, it just says any other vegetation, though.
So to help with that definition, other than in chapter two of definitions that touches a little bit, the state does touch more extensively on that definition, which we are going to be, to supplement the fire code, we are, we will be writing a guideline for vegetation where it's going to highlight and clearly define that a little bit better. I can read you right now, just so you have an idea of what that may say. So according to the state, and it's something that we will also be adding in that policy when we do this, and also in ordinance twenty-three oh three that we are looking to put out later, is, it says hazardous vegetation shall mean any vegetation that is combustible and endangers public safety by creating a fire hazard. Hazardous vegetation is those vegetative materials that will readily ignite, burn and transmit fire to any structure or other surrounding and/or adjacent vegetation. Hazardous vegetation includes, but is not limited to, dry grass and leaves, brush, weeds, green waste, dead or dying trees, low-hanging branches, litter or other flammable vegetation. Hazardous vegetation shall not include a commercial agricultural crop that is being actively grown and managed by the property owner or his or her legal tenant. So there will be, that exact definition will be part of what we write up to help residents understand what hazardous vegetation means, as well as it will be highlighted in the twenty-three, twenty, the fire, the thirteen, twenty, was it twenty twenty-three dash three, twenty-three oh three ordinance for on vegetation, on defensible space.
That would be specific vegetation.
Okay, the reason it concerns me is because the penalty is a thousand dollars a day.
That.
Month in jail, and it's per day.
So Judith, that, that penalty doesn't mean that everyone would get that.
No, but you have the discretion to define what, what.
But there is never in any ordinance, because every ordinance has that in everywhere, in, in, in San Mateo County, in the state, you have to put some kind of penalty in place.
Oh, I get that.
Because, you know, there, it's like the people who never want to comply. Fire department has never been one, we're not here to try and penalize anybody, we want to get voluntary compliance and educate people how to get to that and show, and we know it's a process, so it's a process that we want to support and say, okay, if you're showing that you're actively doing this portion, that portion, we know that you're working on it, that's all that we're asking for. That penalty is there for people who blatantly are just not going to comply, do anything about it. I'm sure you all have neighbors that you're trying to do the right thing and you have neighbors that won't do anything. So there is always a gray area there, and obviously it is something that we definitely wouldn't exercise until we get to the very end, not to mention there is an appeal process before that even happens, should it go down a legal route, but there's plenty of letters and notifications that the district would send out. to a resident saying, hey, we've been out here this time on this date, you still haven't done anything. A second letter. There'll be a series of a process before and they will be forewarned saying, okay, this is our last attempt. If you don't contact us and develop a plan and start making progress, these will be the results of that. So people will know well in advance before we just, hey, here's a fine, here's a ticket, here you go. That's not how we operate.
It isn't how you operate and I really do trust you on that. It scares me to look at an ordinance that allows that and allows that amount discretion. So that's what I'm I'm just being honest here, what I struggle with.
Additionally, that language comes straight out of the state fire code.
Not the numbers. Yeah, you fill in the blanks. So the blanks of a thousand and six months. It's the per day bit that that, you know.
Yeah.
It's scary, right? Okay, so let me move on. And the the appeal would just be to the board. There's no further appeal, right?
It's exactly, it's written in your case.
Yeah, okay. And then a question on the applicability, there's a fifty percent rule. If you're updating fifty percent or more your structure and I I know it's a Byzantine calculation, so I'm not going to ask for explanation of that. But in one place in one oh two point one, it references twelve months, like a permit in twelve months. And in nine oh three point six point one, it references twenty four months. And that's the sprinkler one. So my question is cutting, forget what the detailed language is. When does the sprinkler apply? Is it only when you're updating more than fifty percent over twenty four? Like permits over twenty four months? I'm confused by the twelve and twenty four months difference.
So first I can tell you that what it means, so the building department sets, they're the ones who determine the fifty percent. Once they determine it's triggered that fifty percent, then it comes to fire department for review. The whole twelve month thing, the reason that's there, it's basically to say that in a twelve month period, if you were to do construction, so let's say I'm in February right now. I'm purposely only going to do forty percent, whatever, because I don't want to trigger the sprinkler. Okay. If I wait twelve months, I can next March, because I'm already in February, next March, I can apply for another permit and now I can do another thirty percent. So that's what that twelve month means. Now I.
Yeah.
And then what is your twenty four month?
It nine oh three point six point one. Nine oh three point six point one. Yep. Where required due to improvements to buildings and structures and it. I mean, if you don't know offhand, it's.
No, I'm just looking for where you're seeing the twenty four months.
Fifty percent, two years, it says two years rather than twenty four months. I have a three eighty six is the. Yeah, I'm looking at the chart.
Because I don't see, I'm trying to find twenty four months.
Oh, it says two years, you might want.
Oh, two years, okay. Is there an item, so nine oh three point six point one.
Item two. No, it.
Operations or repairs to more than fifty percent of the existing gross floor area of the building within a two year time period.
And they're looking at the summary.
Oh, you're. I was looking at the actual code.
Yeah.
I think that might be a typo because I'm not, I'm trying to find in the actual ordinance that was the signed copy ordinance. I'm not seeing it in there.
Okay.
That could be, that could be one of those things that may have been the change.
Thank you.
We can't go below the minimum. We can be more stringent as we talked about, but we can't.
For example, Woodside, they do thirty six months. So they are more stringent than what we're putting forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Quick follow up on that. I there was some back and forth with, I think Laura, just about aligning that those calculations, the fifty percent values with with the town's calculations, but I think you agreed to, and I just want to make sure the final version.
That is correct. We did use your calculation and your verbiage that's in your building code to mirror it so that there'd be no confusion.
Thank you.
We just settle on the standards fifty percent.
Yeah.
It's nice to meet you, Kim. Thank you for being here. Thank you also very much for describing all that background. That was super helpful for me to kind of understand why this is different and how it's bringing the whole process up to other neighboring communities, our communities on the peninsula. So thank you very much for that. And so, as you mentioned, I appreciate, you know, your description of how this format is a new for, you know, a more robust format. And it's obviously got an enormous amount of technical information. And so I'm wondering if you guys in broad struck strokes could describe from your perspective, what are the significant changes, if you will, to bucket them in broad strokes?
Just just for starters, the format itself.
Right.
Yeah, just for starters itself, the format itself is was a big change. Previously, the the previous ordinances that we had did not include our findings of fact. But we've always had findings of fact. It was just never included in the ordinance. And when I looked at the rest of the county and what they were doing with their ordinances, they were, the format was completely different. And I could see the difference between what we had in Woodside and what the rest of the county had. And I felt that we needed to update ours and bring it up to the rest, you know, the standards of the rest of the county was that. So we've always had the findings of fact. It's just that it was always submitted to the Building Standards Commission, but we never provided it in the ordinance. So that was that was one thing, just the format. And then I provided the town council with an Excel sheet that described what all of the changes were in in the fire code. There's a lot to go over. I don't, you know, there's quite a bit. That was the matrix that we provided to you with the red writing that was all new.
Right.
I think that to Sarah, to answer one thing, because I know it's even been stuff that's come in through emails to us. What people have asked about is the fire protection plans and landscape plans. That's probably a big change. It's a big change as far as writing in the ordinance, but it already existed. It's in the chapter forty nine of the fire code, which is adopted by the state. So it was already there. It just wasn't something that was highlighted here as being part of a local amendment or an ordinance that they were adding into the ordinance. So that is probably a big chunk that is new for a lot of people to grasp and something certainly that we're happy to discuss and and educate people on so that they know exactly what that means. And that will also be part of the policy guideline that we're going to be writing for vegetation. That will be part of that. That'll be just something, basically, it's an information page for people to to have more information on that. The other thing, it would be the, let's see. So the wildfire preparedness committee, some main points of concern that they had was section one oh two point one point one. The applicability to alterations, additions, and repairs of existing building structures. I know we touched on that a little bit already, but we can add to that in saying that this section establishes a standard for when alterations to existing buildings are considered new construction. And as such, would be subject to the requirements of ordinance thirteen twenty twenty three. In general, alterations to existing buildings for which buildings permits have been issued within any twelve month period that collectively exceed more than fifty percent of the existing gross floor area and or wall area are considered new construction under the district standard. This is a common fifty percent standard. The district modified this section consistent with the requests from the town. The there is more, this section also provides that if the local government within the district's jurisdiction establishes a standard for when such alterations are considered new construction, the district will accept computations under such a standard so long as a local government standard is more stringent than the district's standard. The other one, they had a question on the local construction permits, which is section one oh five six point two, one oh five point six point two five. And the fire protection plans and landscape plans are required for all new construction. That is actually not correct. WPC had thought that it's required for all new construction. And so we made that correction in informing them that the fire protection plans and landscape plans are required for new construction in accordance with chapter forty nine of the fire code, which establishes requirements for wild urban interface areas. Those are state law requirements. A fire protection plan may also be required for new construction to implement the International Wild Urban Interface Code. So just because it's there, it doesn't mean it's applied to that there are, there are specific requirements that that falls under. The other section they had a question of was one oh five point eight. And that seemed to run consistent with other people's concerns. And that is that this section is consistent with existing provisions in the state fire code concerning fire protection plans. So again, this was a section that the fire code officials authorized require the owners or owner or owners authorize agents provide a fire protection plan. The fire protection plan shall be prepared to determine the acceptability of a fire protection and life safety measures designed to mitigate wildfire hazards presented for the property under construction. So if we were, if someone is developing something and we were to go in and, you know, they've got a lot of good clearance or developing this. There'd be no need, we could see and say, oh, no, you you guys are good, but it's there for properties where there's heavy dry vegetation a lot. So there is an assessment process that would occur with these. It doesn't mean that it's always going to be a requirement. And then section one oh seven, this was another point of concern and we wanted to highlight that it's the district's intention to allow, when appropriate, exemptions for fees to public entities within the district. The district understands that mid peninsula open space district is not a private nonprofit entity. It is a special district form under Public Resources Code, section fifty nine zero zero. Therefore, the district views the mid peninsula open space district as another public entity within the district. Stanford University is not a public entity. So that was just to explain how the fees work and how sections one oh seven would apply to both of those entities. So I there's, there is a lot, as she was saying in the matrix, we provided with the major changes. And because this is a large document, like you're wondering, it's kind of hard even to do a broad stroke because it's lots of different chapters throughout the whole code. But again, it is something definitely that we would love to to have a session for people to 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 break it down easier for people to to understand.
Thank you. My next question. What do you foresee to be the biggest challenges in terms of implementation?
Don't really see, to be honest, I really don't see too many because it would be, it would be the same as what we're doing now. Every time we go do an annual inspection, if it's if it's a residence and it's a defensible space inspection, we would just be taking the time to educate people and say, hey, these are, the report is very comprehensive on the things that we find. And it also explains why these are, what these are, what they mean, what do they need to do to fix these things? And it's just our, when we, when we're there doing inspections, we're constantly talking to the property owners and discussing with them what this all means. So I don't see that being anything different. There, the new challenges I I foresee would be more for commercial buildings because of these operational permits definitely affect more the commercial than the residential. There's not a lot of commercial in this district, but it would be something for them to get used to, to know that there is with an operational permit, though it also requires an annual inspection from the fire department to make sure that they are in compliance with code. I mean, it could be as simple as, you know, a gas station, making sure that they're storing and cleaning up all the oils from doing, if they do maintenance area vehicles, that their oil changes when they're doing and they're getting rid, they have a company that comes in and takes all the dirty oils and that they're keeping all their flammable separate from other combustibles. So there are a lot of things that we do as far as the operational permit. It's for them to be able to operate that type of business or do that type of work. And it just, I think that will be, to answer your question, would be the only challenge for for owners, business owners to get used to. But otherwise, I don't see there being many challenges.
Well, I could think of a challenge for the fire district and that would be to, you know, we're going to have to increase our staff to keep up with the amount of building that's going on, especially with the apartments. That's going to, you know, we're going to have to keep up with that and we're going to need more staff to do it. So that would be one on the fire district side.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, a couple of questions about, so there's specifically section forty nine, the your landscape review for new for new construction or for, I guess, redevelopment project. Is that going to sort of coordinate with, I mean, we, obviously, we have an ASCC review of all of our planting funds that I know you're a part of that process. It's just, are we, is there a way to coordinate sort of our design guidelines with your guidelines? I mean, we know, obviously, don't want to be directing people towards dangerous planting. So I, how does that?
I don't think anybody would want to do that. I think it's in everybody's best interest that we coordinate and work together on coming up with what we want to do with our landscape.
But you would have a separate review from the, what, you know, an ASCC.
I think it would be a separate.
Yeah, okay. And then the fire protection plan is, I mean, you're you're saying that it's sort of, it's reserved for, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's it's another thing where it's kind of, kind of on a, kind of an ad hoc basis where you decide some of these projects needed, some don't. Is that, is that fair to say or is there?
Some of them may need it, some of them won't. Would just be looking at the site plan and where they want to, you know, where they want to position the structure on the site. And then look at what the vegetate, the surrounding vegetation, topography. What does that all look like? What is, what is the aspect of of the property? Where is the house base? Where's the vegetation on the property? And what is a plan that we can come up with to mitigate the the dangers and hazardous vegetation on on the? It would be an individualized assessment for each of the properties.
So it it will be an individualized assessment and some properties will just have more of a mitigation requirement.
Some properties may not have at all.
Right, but you'll still have to make the assessment. So it's not, it's not that, it's not that you're just arbitrarily exempting some properties. And it is, it could apply to any residential development project if if. But it's not, I mean, there was some language about applying only to commercial or to other larger projects, but it could, I mean, it could apply to smaller projects as well. Is that fair? Yeah, okay. Any other questions from the council for?
Just just one, give me an example of how this would work. In terms of the hazardous vegetation, what do you currently do to kind of identify it? It's not only triggered by a new add to the building, right? That's, it's just, you look at vegetation, you say, but what's the current system? What, what do you do?
So you have, you have the home ignition zones, right? Three zones around the structure. Zone zero is zero to five feet off the footprint of the house. And then it goes to zone one, which would be five to thirty feet. And then zone two, thirty to a hundred feet. That hundred feet around the structure is really what we're looking at. That's our defensible space. That's what firefighters need to protect the homes. And that's what the homes need to be protected from the wildfire, an oncoming wildfire. You want to create a buffer between the oncoming wildfire and the structure itself. And the way we do that is by removing, replacing and the vegetation that exists there.
But in terms of like how you do it now, do you have people that go out and inspect regularly? I'm not aware of it, so.
Yeah, so we we have, during during wildfire season, well, they say there is no more wildfires season, it's year round. But for us, we hire additional inspectors to come in and help us out because we have six thousand parcels that that need to be inspected. And we can't do it on an annual basis. So what we do is we try to hit every parcel in a three year rotation. And so we have to bring on extra inspectors to get that done. And so during wildfire season between May and the end of October, basically, when we do our chipping season, we bring on extra inspectors and that's all they do is they go out and do defensible space inspections, educate the homeowners, tell them what they need to do on their property to meet the requirements. But also what can they do for home hardening to increase the survivability of their home?
And if they identify a problem, I presume they come in. How how does it escalate from there?
Yeah, so if they identify a problem, they make the notification to the homeowner. We have a new program now where we can do it via email and we give them a code and then they go to a a website. They put in the code and they can get their report. They have thirty days to comply with any requirements that they're in violation of. After thirty days, we go back out, do a reinspection. If they're, if they're in compliance, great, we mark them off, they're good. We have all, we've captured all their data in our program. And if they aren't compliant, they, we can give them up to fifteen days. Let them know that, you know, you've been out here. This is our second time. We're now giving them fifteen days to be compliant and then we'll do that again for a third time. We're giving them fifteen days. After the third time, at that point, we have the ability to do a tax lien on the property. And you can either hire a contractor or have our own mitigation crew go out to the property with a judge's warrant to do the work ourselves. And then we put an extra charge on to their with the tax assessor's office, onto their property. And then we put, uh, an extra charge onto their, with the, with the tax assessor's office, onto their property taxes that they would have to pay at the end of, probably the following year. Because you have to do it by July. First of every year, I believe.
And is that frequent that you need to go to that?
We've done it maybe since I've been a fire marshal here, which is the last seven years. We've done it maybe three times.
Okay, thank you.
And that's also just to add you to that, when you're saying fifteen days. That is people who aren't doing anything. It, when, when people, and then the other great thing with the website, when they log in and they can see their report. I mean, the report is so comprehensive down the photos, explanations, it really helps a homeowner out a lot. But the homeowner also has the ability to upload pictures showing, hey, that area that I needed, I, I fixed it, I corrected it. And they can upload their photos and we can check it. And sometimes if it's something that is obvious and we'd say, oh yeah, we can tell. But there's other times where it's not so obvious, we actually have to go out to the property and reassess again. And then it, it'll just, it just keeps carrying over. And so we always want, because the whole point is we want people to just keep moving forward. And sometimes it's a lot to tackle, but as long as we're doing something consistently, eventually we get there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Most of our residents in, in this district, they're very compliant, very compliant. They want to comply with it. Our biggest problem is having the staff to get out to every residence to, to make sure that we're covering what we need to cover.
Any other? Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm going to move on to a public comment then, and we will start with, with Jennifer Hammer, the chair of WPC. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Jennifer Hammer and I'm the chair of the Portola Valley Wildfire Preparedness Committee. My committee is recommending that you do not ratify Fire Code thirteen twenty twenty-three at present. In the agenda packet, you will find our specific comments about thirteen twenty twenty-three. I want to thank the district for both of their very well thought out responses to our questions. These documents clarified many issues, however. A major concern regarding unexplored consequences of this ordinance still exists. There are potentially significant financial and regulatory burdens for the residents of Portola Valley. I recommend you wait to ratify this code until after my committee meets with the fire district next Wednesday. And may I point out, this will have been the first time we have actually, will have actually been able to meet with the fire district and actually ask them questions. Everything prior to this had to be in writing. After that meeting, we can then provide you with an updated recommendation. I know we're all thinking about the terrible fires in Maui. There is a desire to act quickly to keep Portola Valley safe. But this fire code is going to impact residents for many years in a weeks away to ensure we understand. Thirteen twenty twenty-three seems like a reasonable plan of action. However, thirteen twenty twenty-three is just one piece of a bigger picture. My committee is alarmed by the unexplored consequences, not only to the fire code. But also new fire ordinances that are being introduced within a few months of each other. There is no information on the process or timeline for how these ordinances are reviewed or voted on. A few weeks ago, the fire district had the first reading for two new draft fire ordinances, twenty three oh one and twenty three oh two. And next week, they will vote on them. That is only a thirty day window for residents to provide feedback. In addition, there has been no opportunity for residents to ask questions. These ordinances give the fire district powerful new enforcement tools, including the ability to abate properties. If a homeowner is unable to pay for the abatement, the bill is sent to the county, which would recoup the cost of the rebatement as a taxable event. And this is new, I believe this is what Marshall Bullard was, was talking about. In addition, we expect at least one more fire ordinance that deals with vegetation management to be finalized within a few months. This ordinance will likely include a perimeter property line clearance of fifty feet. That has the potential of costing some homeowners tens of thousands of dollars. It could also pose a threat to the conservation efforts that Portola Valley has championed for many years. Our many residents will face a huge financial challenge complying with all these new regulations. It just seems like a lot of changes are happening very quickly without a process that allows the residents to have their questions answered and their feedback heard. I hope the town council will not only explore all the implications of thirteen twenty twenty-three, but also these new fire ordinances.
Thank you, Jennifer. Other public comments? Uh, MJ Lee, go ahead.
Okay, I'm MJ Lee. I, uh, serve on the wildfire preparedness committee. You know, Jennifer as our chair and E. Bailey and I were the primary authors of the feedback on the ordinances. So, um. My biggest concern about the, the process, my biggest concern is about the process that Marshall Bullard. And the WFPD board have followed in developing their new ordinances. Perhaps I'm spoiled because our town expends a hundred and ten percent effort to update residents on everything. Maybe other than the rusty day lawsuit, uh, everything the town does. And, and to provide ample opportunity for public input, which we just value so much. Now, we heard, uh, Kim, who was not part of this process, uh, at least in dealing with our committee. She said, we would love, but we would love to have a session with the public. They had no sessions with the public. And, you know, we invited, uh, Marshall Bullard to all of our meetings. He came to one meeting this year. He came, uh, he sent, uh, deputy marshal Heard to one meeting, but the deputy marshal didn't know enough to answer our questions. He didn't know enough about what Don was working on. So even though the Portola Valley is so open, I feel. I think on the other hand, the fire district has been pretty much the complete opposite. In fact, I would say almost intentionally opaque. They have a long history of successful fire suppression. But to me, the problem with these new ordinances is that WFPD is acting with supreme authority. They are writing the laws, enforcing them, and then adjudicating any exceptions. So practically speaking, they have all three branches of government in one person, the fire marshal. Now you heard, you heard them tonight say a lot of things, well, you know, that's in the law, but you know, that's not really how we operate, you know? And we're the friendly people who won't write you a citation, but you know, I, I'm always a skeptic. And, and if someone has this in the law, then I'm going to believe that they're going to enforce it at some point. Uh, I know I only have twenty-five seconds, I'm sorry. Okay, so. And when I say they didn't make any effort to hold public discussion, they didn't even tell our committee or our town council liaison Craig Taylor when ordinances were coming up for vote. And not even giving us the courtesy of explaining their ordinance process. So we would have these meetings and ask, well, how does this get approved? And we didn't know the answer. For that, based on a public records request, it appears that the ordinances were written with the help of Rusty Day. The man who has sued our committee once and the town twice. So. You know, we want the town to be fire safe. And I realized that the fire district citation and enforcement may be the only way to get compliance. But the ordinances need to be practical, aligned with science, something residents can accept and implement, and they should balance cost versus benefits. So some of these ordinances, some of the things in the ordinance do not do that. Like originally I said, you know, enclosed deeds have to be sprinkled. And then, uh, I think the building department, our building department questioned that.
I have to ask you to finish up, sorry.
Okay, um, let me just pass out one other thing. And this is what aligns me just as much is this new thing about, um. About the fifty foot and hundred foot setback or fire, fire breaks. That for some properties, like two and a half acres, you will now be having to mitigate fifty percent of your property as, as a firefighter. And I think people. That, let me just make one more.
MJ, I'm sorry, I have to ask you to finish. You're way over.
Yeah, can I just make one statement, Jeff? You know, a couple of years ago, you, you told our committee that you wanted the town to own our building code and our design guidelines and I. And not have them decided by the fire district. And I took that position to heart. So. If you agree that residents should be able to provide input on the district ordinance before they are ratified. Then, um, I ask you not to ratify the ordinance tonight. And I feel you are the last line of defense of property rights and property values in Portola Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other speakers here in the, in the, uh, in the room, in the, in the schoolhouse. Okay, I see no hands. Oh, uh, Ronnie Eastman, go ahead.
Hi, I don't, I don't have anything very profound to say. I would just add that, you know, if your, your doctor tells you to quit smoking. You can take their advice or not, at your own detriment, to your own detriment. Um, your doctor is not going to die of heart disease or lung disease. But, um, the doctors in this room tonight, who are giving this, giving us this advice and encouraging us to take it. Unlike us, when the fire wildfire does come. And it seems inevitable that it will. Um, I will be fleeing with my family. You will all be fleeing with your families. These gentlemen, these slaves and gentlemen in uniform there, um, they will not be fleeing. They will be staying behind and putting their life on the line to protect our homes and our families. So I think we should. Uh, uh, I, I encourage you to take their advice. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty.
Thank you, I'm Rusty Day and, uh, since my name gets bandied around quite a bit by people who don't know anything about what's going on. Uh, I want to take a moment to just talk about. This proposed ordinance. First of all, I had nothing to do with trashing this ordinance. Perhaps the fire district can, uh, tell you about that. So that's one accusation we can get past. But another, uh, and I, I want to associate myself with Jennifer Hammer's comments. And I want to associate myself with Ron Eastman's comments. It's very important that the public be deeply involved and then educated about what our fire hazards and risks are in this community. Opening this process up, getting the residents involved, couldn't be better. It's what you should insist upon. And surely the district can do a better job, but so can the town, a much better job. Of involving the residents and educating the residents about the extreme hazard and risk we confront. You're going to talk shortly about evacuation, that situation is even worse. But I want to talk about this ordinance. I want to talk about one thing about this ordinance. This ordinance adopts chapter forty-nine of the fire code in total with some amendments. Chapter forty-nine designates the fire district as a fire hazard severity area. But what the ordinance doesn't do, fails to do. But what the state requires the ordinance to do. And requires the town to do is to designate our very high fire hazard severity areas. Within the district. Where are they? Why is that important? Because when we designate our very high fire hazard severity areas, we trigger the application of fire prevention measures. Under state law and state regulation. That ensure safe development in hazardous areas. The designation by this town of its very high fire hazard severity areas and by the district of the very high fire hazard severity areas, which this ordinance does not do. Is a prerequisite, a necessary condition, it's a mandatory obligation under state law. Five one one seven nine of the government code. But it's also a necessary precondition to the application of CAL FIRE's fire safe development standards, regulations. Now, why should you, as the legislative body in this town, want to make that happen? Because we want to know, where do those regulations apply? We know in Woodside where they apply because Woodside has adopted an ordinance fifteen years ago designating its very high fire hazard severity areas. Portola Valley has not. And consequently, those regulations don't apply anywhere in our town. The benefit of those regulations and protecting us against unsafe development applying nowhere in our town. And that's a defect in this ordinance that you need to correct. Thank you. Matthew, other hands here in the schoolhouse, Karen.
I actually didn't think I had any comments on this, but, um, after listening to folks. I remembered a photograph when we moved into our house, the original part of it being built in nineteen forty-eight. And it's over across the street from Corte Madera School. And you're looking out towards Wendy Hill. And there's a reason this was called Portola Valley. There were, it, the, there were hardly any trees back then. I mean, there were trees, but it really was a different place than it is now. And, um, I sit and I listen to, oh, this is going to cost a lot of money. Well, you know what? What, you can't put a price on a life. And if it saves lives, it's worth the money. I'm just going to say it that way. Do I want to spend it? Probably not, but if it saves lives, we all should do it. And I, I do, I really appreciate everything the wildfire preparedness committee has done for our community. Educating us on home hardening, on vegetation management, really working hard on all of it. And I agree that it would be great to involve the public. But in this situation, I'm going to rely on the experts and the ones that know the codes and are out there fighting the fires and putting their lives on the line. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else here in the schoolhouse? Okay, I'm going to go to Zoom. I see Carolyn Vertonghen's hand up. Carolyn, go ahead.
Great, good evening. I hope that town council understands why it's so important that the residents need to be involved. I agree with everything that was said earlier. You cannot sign an ordinance and then say, oh, this is not going to happen. No, we want clarity here. I'm very happy that at least prevention is recognized. For so many years, it was resiliency. And we, the owners, uh, had to count on ourselves. We did not have any help. So, um, I have a few, just, it's, it's two sections that I wanted to approach. It's section five oh four, fire protection water supplies. And, and so you're concentrating on one building, a new building, and then you forget everything else that is happening on that street. So now the new building code demands fire sprinklers. Well, fire, you, we, we need enough water pressure and we don't have any. There is a major issue with our water infrastructure. And every time we mention it to the planning, they just ignore it. We have mentioned it to the fire department as well. So luckily, the fire department is doing more regular services. But they have no clue on the water pressure. And so it's very important. So you allow a new building to build and then we all suffer from it. It should be one street. So you need the fire, the, the, uh, input of residents. The other section is section nine oh three. This is about the lithium ion battery sprinklers that you, I'm sorry. This is about the lithium ion battery sprinklers that you, I'm sorry, the, the automatic, the lithium ion batteries. You know, you're, you're proposing sprinkler system. I'm sorry, that doesn't work. With lithium iron, you need a gel based solution that covers it. It's not with water that you extinguish, you know, these electric cars or any other iron, lithium iron batteries. So the code is so behind, yet they, they want every electric vehicle. And so this is not right. When, when state governments are not up to date, it's not okay. So the local government has to insist that they protect everything. And so just ratifying or just adopting this is not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Dale Fow, how's his name? Dale, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Can you hear me there?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much for giving me some time. I just want to make a couple of very quick comments. One, I've been dealing with the fire department in various committee capacities for over ten years. And I've always felt that they are probably the most professional organization I've ever dealt with in terms of trying to keep us safe. I think back to one of the key elements that, that the fire department mentioned tonight is that really much of this new code is really just bringing us up to par with the other municipalities in the county. So that's the number one point. Number two point, fire is a clear and present danger. We all recognize it. I understand some concerns of the residents, but my God, let's, let's be serious about the issues. This is a step forward in trying to help us mitigate what we can with the fire danger that we have that exists and is only going to get worse in future years. And so I would heartily recommend that this council adopt the, the new, the new fire ordinances and fire codes from, that are supported by our professionals. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Rita Combs, go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank Fire Marshal Bullard for his commitment to our community and welcome the new person. I appreciate the work that the wildfire committee is doing and plans to do. But I'm glad that this is finally an open discussion. We need to get this in place. It'll take a few years, it's not going to happen overnight, to get things in our town ready for this new ordinance. And with the proposed housing that is to be built into our Wui community, we need to start right away so that the residents that we then welcome into our community are able to get fire insurance and their neighbors are able to be confident that the houses that are being built next door to them are compliant so that we can all be safe together. So thank you for this being a discussion. And I'm looking forward to seeing what's the next steps that we all need to do.
Thank you, Rita. Leslie, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Super. First of all, thank you to everybody for their hard work on this. This is a tough, technical, complex issue, and I appreciate the efforts of Woodside Fire Protection District, our chief, our committees, and all the concerned citizens involved in this. I would like to encourage the town council to adopt the ordinances as presented by our fire department. These guys are our professionals. And I would never assume that I could go out and study a little bit and be more knowledgeable than these folks. They're here to protect us. I don't want great to be the enemy of good in this situation because the difference between great and good can be people's lives. We need to put these ordinances in place. And if they're problematic, they can be worked on as we go along. Karen Ansky raised a valid point. If you look at, you know, aerial photos of, of Portola Valley and such, we've been our own worst enemy. This used to be a pretty clear grazed area, which was more prohibitive to growth of wildfire. And as we've all moved in, people have moved in, grazing has moved out, we've planted lots of plants that don't belong here and crowded in lots of trees. And the problem is now we have to clean them up a bit and clean out our fire breaks. I would say other communities have done this. Other communities have come in line with, you know, pretty stringent fire codes. And it can be done over a series of years. And that should probably be included in, in this effort. But to equivocate over actions that might save a life is, is kind of unbelievable to me. You know, what I do in my property, even if I clean my property up and you don't, well, I'm no better off because you'll threaten my house. So at the risk of borrowing strength, you know, borrowing slogans, which I'm not a fan of, we all need to be the change we want to see. We all need to get it together and these ordinances will help. I'm all for also looking for sources of funding, grants and things like that to help our neighbors who end up with large burdens of cleaning up to see if there are some ways we can help them. But we need to take the advice of our professionals and deal with living in the Wui and make this as safe as possible. This is a situation of people's lives, not, not your landscaping. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Leslie. Christie Corley, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to start with thanking Don Bullard. We had two fires a couple of years in a row above Alpine Swim and Tennis. And I saw three districts come together to put out that fire. And it was mighty scary. So I thank you for always being on, on top of it and always answering my questions when I had them. I would like to see our town adopt very high and high and moderate designations. I also believe in good public communication. To read five hundred and eleven pages for this agenda was a bit much since last Friday. I also believe in, in, I just went through the process that Kim described in Truckee. I had pictures before, pictures afterwards. My one comment would be, I never got an answer after I submitted my secondary pictures. So I am, I think that it's extremely important to keep the communication going. And I guess my one question for process is once your address has been given a, a number, do the insurance companies have access to that? And I thank everyone for all their hard work. I, I'm just split on this. I believe in public communication as much as we can give and as many meetings as we can give it. So, but I also believe in these, these ordinances and, and getting the ordinances right. So whatever you need to do, take care of both. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. I see no other hands up on Zoom. Anybody else in the schoolhouse? Okay, seeing no other comments, I will report back to the council for discussion.
I suppose I, I could start by saying a huge thank you to the, to the district because they have shown incredible patience with us over these many years. And, and it's, it's been, it's been a lot. And you've done a great job. So I, I thank you very much. And I guess what I see at the moment is we're all becoming more professional at this. And our committees included, and I think Doris' comments were really good about understanding what the work of the committees are and being professional about that and understanding what your obligations and your duties are. So of course I am in full, I think the many points have been made that were really excellent. But I would have to say that this particular ordinance comes to us after a lot of public hearings and a lot of attention from a lot of people. And I think it's the best we got. It's not the, by any, it's not, it's just the beginning of our work on this. And I think the wildfire preparedness committee is going to get its chance with the, the fire district on the other ones, which are the more difficult ones to deal with, I think. I personally feel pretty strongly that the lithium battery issue needs to be approached and included. Anyway, I just want to thank you for your, everybody's patience with this. I did think Carolyn Vertonghen's point was a really good question. I, I thought the lithium batteries had, the sprinklers don't help at all with lithium batteries. But that's not true? Is that a question I can ask at this point?
Um.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I.
Yeah, why don't we take, why don't we answer it offline?
Okay.
No, I want to hear the answer.
Christie? Okay. You know what? I actually, I had one other question for them. Let's save that and then we'll, we'll pull them up here and we can, we can.
Okay, if you're collecting, can I collect another question then?
Sure.
I, if that wasn't considered a dumb question, I'm going to ask the question. If you do fifty percent of your house one year and then fifty percent the next year, you don't have to do any. That's pretty, that's pretty gamey. Thirty eight point nine.
I mean, you have a, do you have a better solution for that one?
No, well, I mean, they, they're three years, is, which is what Woodside did.
Yeah.
I don't, I just think it's sort of an obvious answer. I don't, I don't object, but did I understand that correctly?
No, you're right. You're right. Do you have other, other comments?
No, I, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive going ahead with this particular ordinance because we've got to get through all the others too.
Okay. Craig.
So first of all, I wanted to thank Don and welcome Kim. You know, I think they're clearly great partners. I also wanted to thank WPC, who've worked really hard on this. I wanted to speak to the public process and improving the public process. Because I think a lot of the angst that we're going through right now has to do with the process. And I think we could have avoided it. And, and I'm not, there's no blame here, I think, just going forward. But I would hope is that we would think about maybe having a little bit clearer calendar on when these things are coming up so that people can know what to expect. I know it's been difficult for WPC to understand how to anticipate some of this stuff. And I think that would help go toward this sense of unintended consequences. Because I think we all agree that, you know, getting good public input is the way you avoid unintended consequences. Because you get somebody goes, oh, but did you think about this? And they go, oh, you didn't. And then they, they can correct that. And, and one thing I've seen with the district is they really have been good partners. When there is an obvious unintended consequence, they've tried to mitigate for that or change the language. Or if it didn't seem appropriate, drop something that, you know, really didn't make sense. So I really think that in this particular case, if, if you guys on the, in the department could consider a sixty day window, which I realize your legal obligation is a first reading, thirty days and approval. But in terms of being able to allow the committees to have time to agendize this and get you feedback and stuff, I think if you could consider sixty days and then have a calendar on when you expect these things to happen, I, I can go a long way in terms of the process of, of helping people get what's going on. So that's my sort of, you know, process comment. The other thing I would say is I've been meeting with Don and Kim monthly for like the last three months. And I feel like we've had really fruitful discussions. And there's a couple of things I wanted to highlight that have come out of those. One of them is what Kim's talked about is the idea of having public Q and A. I think we all agree that the goal here is voluntary compliance. Like that's our goal. Like, you know, we may have to use all these draconian fines and stuff, but the real goal here is to try to get people, excuse me, is to just try to get people to understand what's needed to be done and why it's important for community safety. And I think most residents are going to follow through with that. So I think following up on those public Q and As, I think are going to be critical. And Kim's already volunteered to do a couple of them. So I think that's going to be great. The next thing I wanted to add is some of the sort of broad definitions that Judith spoke to. When I've talked with Don and Kim, one of the things that we did talk about is that they're going to write up some guidelines. And, and granted, Judith's the lawyer, so she's going to say, well, the guidelines don't change the law, which is correct. But the, the, the thing that I liked about the guidelines, much like we have guidelines that come out of ASCC, is it's, it's a softer place for us to be able to explain kind of what's expected and help homeowners know what they need to do without trying to second guess the district and the inspectors or play cat and mouse or, you know, whatever the, you know, right analogy is. So, so I really love the idea of getting some guidelines out there. And we can evolve those guidelines, you know? And that's again, something WPC can help with as well is when the guidelines are there, they can help ask clarifying questions and then we can make the guidelines better. So I think there's that piece. And then the last thing I would add is when I've talked to the fire marshals is at least in twenty-three, in, in, sorry, in three twenty-three oh three, which is the vegetation ordinance. I mean, they talked about explicitly putting in a clause that says, you know, if a resident is making progress when they review every year, that they'll continue on. And they sort of said as much verbally. And I think that's the critical thing. I think we're all looking for a ramp to compliance. And I think that's really the department's, as I understand it anyway, the department's intent. So I hope we see more of that language actually in ordinances so that residents can rely on if they're making progress and they can show progress, the district will say yes. And, and they won't feel like, oh, maybe I'm going to get away with this or maybe the inspector is going to slap every fine they can. Which again, I don't really believe you guys would ever do that. But I can understand how a resident doesn't have any way to know for sure. So the more we can get some of these, if you're making progress into ordinances, I think that would be better. So overall, I, I appreciate the partnership between the town and the department. And I, I just hope in the next, you know, five, ten years, we just make it stronger and stronger and make the community safer. So again, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so thank you for putting this all together. We, we appreciate you. We appreciate the thought you put into things and the perspectives you bring. We prioritize safety this year and I think adopting safety ordinances is going to be really critical. However, I, I am struggling with this because it's like the five percent that really bothers me could have been avoided because I don't think you need to say any other vegetation is determined by the fire code official and not have another venue to have a reasonable discussion. I trust you guys. But I have to say, with twelve of you in the room wearing the uniforms you are, you are authority figures. And you are not somebody I feel like going to and saying, you know, I got a special situation here. You have to realize that. The public is going to look at you and just be afraid, which, you know, we want that authority. On the other hand, as you implement these guidelines, I can't, I can't in good conscience vote to hold something up because I don't like specific lines. So I am really going to rely on you to implement guidelines and to understand that it's a collaboration with the public. It isn't, anytime you actually use the draconian guidelines, you're going to pay a price. And I think you know that. I mean, this group right now, I Anytime you actually use the draconian guidelines, you're going to pay a price. And I think you know that. I mean, this group right now, I think seems to have a good perspective on it, but you have to realize law is law. Once you set it, it's not coming back. And that makes me very uncomfortable. So going forward, like I'm feeling pressured because it's fire season to like have our code updated. And I think what you've done here, I'm not going to second guess you're the experts. But on the vegetation management, anything you bring forward, I am going to raise this issue about, do you have to be that draconian? Do you need to have that discretion? Because I don't like it when the state does that to us on housing stuff. They put us between a rock and a hard place and you cannot win that game. And it's striking me as, you know, a minor version of that, but you guys are on our side. You are putting your lives at risk. That is a huge difference in my mind. So please, you know, develop the education, develop the outreach. To me, that's going to be how we all win. And, and any one draconian instance is maybe or maybe not going to win for the community. So please, I would just ask you for that. And then I would ask you to try and work out a process with the WPC that's more productive. I don't have a definition for that. And I think there is probably a lot of ways you could do that and hopefully even have fun and, and use them for part of the outreach to educate. There's a lot of ways this could go and I think this is a great opportunity. And, you know, welcome, Kim. And, you know, I think we can, can do something really good here. So I will keep hoping for that and appreciate all the efforts that you put in to think about our, our community.
Sure.
Yeah, a lot of my comments are going to be echoing things at this point that have already been said. So you know, bottom line is you guys, as have been said, are the experts. We rely on you. And, you know, given that, I'm definitely happy to support this. And I think where, where I'm, you know, I think what I'm focused on is what are the opportunities for improvement in terms of the process? I feel like we've definitely had hip-ups over the last two years in terms of staff and staff working together in terms of, you know, here's a great example of we, we, you know, I have tremendous respect for all of our committees. And in this incidence, it's the WPC, these guys work so hard. And so, you know, what can we do to improve that process? I think that's going to be a really important thing going forward. And involve, you know, I, I think looking ahead at the residents or at the upcoming ordinances, how can we use those as an opportunity to kind of reflect on what's gone wrong, which I think we have a lot of information there and try and use those two upcoming ordinances to really improve the process. So that's kind of how I would think about it. So thank you again.
Thank you. I did want to ask one question. So I will ask Don or Kim to come back up and just, so the, the, just these ordinances. There were four ordinances. I know you did a first, can you just, just, just update us on the status of those ordinances that you're, you're contemplating?
Okay, sure. Okay. So there was four ordinances. 2301, 2302, 2303, and 2304. 2301 is an administrative citation ordinance that was already adopted in December of 2022. That one, all we did was we updated it and we made the fines on that consistent with the fire code as well as made it exempt from CECL. So that's all we did with that. 2302 is a public nuisance ordinance. I provided you the information on that and what that, what that's all about. Those two are up for, they've already gone through the first reading. They're up for adoption on the September 26th board meeting. 2303 and 2304 are the next two. 2303 is the defensible space and hazardous vegetation ordinance. That one that I wrote and I gave a draft to the wildfire preparedness committee is basically been dissolved and we're going to go with the state's recommendation from Cal Fire on their, on their model D space ordinance. Okay? And then 2304 was the fuel break ordinance. We're shelving that and we're not going to address that until a later date. And I don't know if that's going to be in 24 or 25. So that's the four ordinances.
Thank you. Did you want to?
Yes.
Question about the lithium.
Mary's question about lithium batteries. I'm curious also.
Yeah.
So the lithium ion batteries. No. A fire sprinkler system is not going to extinguish it. It requires a copious amount of water to extinguish. It will help mitigate it enough time for firefighters to get there and actually do their operation. But with that said, it's really important because of industry and things that are being pushed for doing these batteries, getting away from PG&E, having our own backup, it's really important. We really try to encourage residents and people. If you're going to install them, install them on the exterior part of your house, not on the interior. Because literally if there's a fire in your house, even with walls and the protection of construction, they let off a lot of toxic fumes. And once the fire gets going, I mean, it's, you almost need to sink it in a pool of water, like a swimming pool. And for firefighters to come, it's not like they can take the unit with their hands and go dump it in something. It takes a lot to mitigate those fires. So to keep your house safe, we always encourage, just do them on the exterior side. No matter what the installers say, they're obviously making money, no matter what, and we don't care about that part. We're here for the residents. And so just to, but it will, it won't extinguish it, but mitigate enough time to get you out of your house safely and to get the firefighters into to finish the extinguishment.
I wanted to make on that is that it's a really important point is that a fire sprinkler system is a life safety, safety system that is designed to allow you to have enough time to get out of the house. It's not really designed to put the fire out. It's designed to suppress it until fire suppression gets there. And then we take over from there.
Thank you. My comment was just, I will agree with, with Craig that I think, I think there are more opportunities for outreach. I mean, we, we do a lot of study sessions in addition to our, our first readings and such. And I mean, I think some of your first readings have sort of been study sessions. So just, but I also appreciate the, I mean, I've, I've, I've seen the back and forth here. And so I've seen the efforts you've made to make this fire code amenable to our requests, to other groups' requests. So I, you know, obviously it's a work in progress. They always are. So I'm comfortable with it. I do want to, you know, there are, you know, there will be guidelines, the, the fire protection plans or some things that we know need to be completed, that you agreed to be completed. That's my one, I agree with you with my concern there. No. I'm comfortable with this as well.
Ready for motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
So I'd move that we adopt the resolution to ratify 23, 2023.
A second.
Uh, any further discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hafey?
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warnikoff?
Hi.
Mayor Ralphs?
Hi. Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a break here and then we'll come back and we will go back to item 4A, the housing element update. So we will come back at nine thirty-five. Okay, we are back with item 4A, the housing element update. I believe Laura will be presenting this.
I will. Thank you. Just a minute while I share my screen. Okay, as wait. Does that look okay to everybody?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so like usual, I'm here this evening with Adrian Smith, the town senior planner. And we wanted to provide you an update on the housing element and talk about the next steps and the contract with Urban Planning Partners. So in terms of key milestones, just a quick touchdown, back in March, the council adopted the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. And then on May 10th, adopted the housing element and the informing general plan amendments. Then on July 25th, we received the second comment letter from HCD. And then on August, August 9th, staff, staff provided an update to town council on that HCD letter as well as coordination with the Woodside Fire Protection District. So in terms of the latest information from the HCD reviewer and those interactions, we held a second meeting with her and that was just yesterday, September 12th. We're continuing to work through the comment letter, ask her specific questions and get her feedback on what would be acceptable and compliant with the law. Again, she was helpful and collaborative in her tone. But we have found that it's been difficult to get responses from her. So this is presumably due to her workload. We've talked about this before. They've had a lot of turnover at HCD. And so it has been hard for them to get back to everybody. So we were trying to discuss with her, what are the most effective ways to move forward? So what is the best way to communicate with her to be able to move forward and to get good results? So what she, she suggested is the best thing to do is to actually have meetings with her where we share items on the screen and live time, get her feedback. So we used that approach yesterday in our meeting and it was helpful. She did give us some feedback that we can start to build on and start to implement. So we are working right now to schedule two additional meetings to continue to review potential solutions with her. In terms of the next steps and what we imagine happening in the timeline for that is we want to continue with this back and forth process with HCD. And then once there are potential solutions that we think HCD is likely to accept, then we would bring that revised housing element back through a public process with all of those things combined. So what we're thinking right now for an approximate timeline, and this is definitely subject to change, but we wanted to give the council some idea of where we are at this point. We would expect to have a draft housing element to planning commission no earlier than November. So this is a general target. We need to do some of that back and forth and see what's going to be possible. Then we imagine the planning commission and town council could there do their public reviews of the revised housing element and kind of the November through January timeframe. And then maybe the end of January, kind of January-ish, I've said here, we could send the revised housing element back to HCD. They have the opportunity to do another 60-day review, but because we've been working back and forced to us that while she can't make promises, she can give us feedback and she can make sure that we are on the right track. And then what we imagine doing is having the zoning code amendments follow the housing element so that the planning commission could be reviewing the zoning code amendments while the town waits for the HCD comments. Then those two pieces could be brought together with adoption of a final certified housing element and the zoning code amendments. And we imagine that that timeframe is probably March or April of 2024. Um, just a quick note, I'm not in my usual Zoom setup. So if I'm, if there's any problem with you hearing me, please let me know. Please stop me. So then we wanted to talk a little bit about the contract with Urban Planning Partners, UPP. So we've been working with them for a long time. They've continued to do really great work, I believe, for the town. The current budget is depleted, as we talked about at the last meeting. And you all know at this point that I am leaving the town's employment. So the town will not have a permanent person in that position. Over the last two years, I've provided oversight as well as completion of necessary work. So I don't just manage the process. I do a lot of work behind the scenes as well to keep things moving forward. We don't anticipate that the interim planning and building director will be able to complete the same number of hours towards this effort. His role will be more related to oversight and less accomplishing the specific tasks and moving things forward. So our proposal at this time is for an increase in the UPP project manager time so that she could continue to do her normal role for us, but also help to prepare for public meetings. And so we use this approach when the town senior planner was on maternity leave. You have all seen Carla Violet in a lot of meetings. And so she increased her time in the background to help cover the work that Adrian had been doing previously. So our proposal is to use a similar kind of approach. So we wouldn't have to bring in new people or get new people up to speed as much. We would increase Carla Violet's time to help cover some of the work that I would have otherwise done. Then the interim planning and building director would continue to provide the oversight over everything and the connection to the town manager and the connection to the council. So the proposed scope of work in the budget is attached to the staff report. The proposal for tonight is for you to review that, give any feedback. And then staff would return with the formal contract amendment and that could just come to you on the consent calendar. Presumably because most of the details could be worked out. So specific to the contract, the contract amendment that's in front of you includes a number of items. There are regular working meetings with staff. So the staff team meets with the Urban Planning Partners team on a regular basis. These are truly working meetings where we work through things that need to be done. And we also look at the schedule, upcoming milestones and create clarity on who's doing what for all of the different steps. We anticipate three meetings with HCD, three meetings with the planning commission. We're imagining that two of those would be kind of in this fall timeframe when we're working on a new draft. And then one would be in 2024 towards the actual certification of the final housing element. And then we also imagine three town council meetings, again, two being kind of in this fall into the winter timeframe. And then one in the spring for final certification of the housing element and the zoning code amendments. And then the scope also includes the additional support for the six public meetings to fill in for my position as I depart. So in terms of the cost of this additional work, we've got $13,400. That's from previous work that's been completed that was unanticipated as we've reconciled all of the bills and kind of closed out the fiscal year and done those activities. And then the estimate moving forward from the September, so kind of now timeframe through completion of the housing element in the early 2024 timeframe, we estimate to be about $66,000. So the total for all of that is just short of $75,000 at 74,469 total. And there are no funds in the budget for this work at this time. So this total would have to be paid out of reserves. When we were working on the budget document, we, we assumed, we hoped that the amendments would be very minor and we'd be able to handle those at a staff level. So the combination of the amendments being more significant than what we anticipate as well as the transition in the director position leave us quite a bit of work that UPP still needs to complete for the town. And I just wanted to just raise this for the council to start to think about. You have a very difficult challenge, of course, this balancing act. We have a very strong town ethos around public participation and that oftentimes results in a large number of meetings. But that really does cost real money in staff time, but also directly in consultant time as well. And so in this timeframe of more constrained budgeting, we just present this kind of information to help the council understand some of the costs of continuing this work. So with my departure, we estimate that just holding one planning commission meeting with all of the preparation, all of the attendance, all the things that go into it costs about $4,500. You know, a very, like a community-wide meeting is going to be in the neighborhood of about $10,000. So we just wanted to give you a sense of kind of what these things cost because you're in this position of doing this really difficult balancing act. We wanted to provide you a related update related to the fire district and the work that we've been doing with them. This is a little bit of repeat, but in case anybody's new to this conversation, back on March 29th, the fire district submitted what we've been calling the seven requested mitigations. And those were included in the adopting resolution for the ISMND. And then town staff met with the fire district staff as well And then town staff met with the fire district staff as well as their legal counsel and ours. To discuss how we would implement those seven requested mitigations. So as a result of that meeting on July sixth, the fire district submitted written guidance on how they would like to see those requested mitigations implemented. And then at the last meeting in August, based on your direction. We started to compile those seven requested mitigations with the thirteen key approaches to fire safety. And I guess because we're being cute, we've been calling those the seven plus thirteen. And then, so we've put all those materials together. And staff met with the fire district staff again to discuss them on September sixth. And then they provided additional comments to us just today. So this is great, we're making a lot of progress on it. So thanks to the fire district for their immediate response, very helpful. So we expect to have a final version that we can produce and we can distribute widely. From the town and from the fire district so that the public and the council will be up to date. On how we imagine the implementation of all of these measures happening. So in terms of the actual request or the action before the council tonight. We're here to do our best to answer any questions. You're free to provide any additional direction as we're moving forward with the next steps. And then we would also specifically like your direction or kind of informal approval. Of the additional scope of work and budget for the UPP contract. So that staff can prepare a formal contract amendment and bring that forward to you at another meeting. So those are the requests, the asks of you tonight. And that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Laura. Questions from the council for Laura?
Laura, when you talk about the HCD reviewer kind of drafting in real time with you, roughly speaking. And then you bringing something to council that is more likely to get approved. To be honest, it sounds to me like they're going to tell you what to put in it. And I just don't know if you can provide any context about how that, how you think that will work and. You know, just to be out there, my, my concern is that. If we lean in too much to HCD and they're helping us draft, it could be super efficient, but it. You know, it could, it caused us to iterate more discussions and counts, so there's a balance there I'm trying to think through.
Yeah, I agree, there's definitely a balance. And the working meeting that we had, our most recent working meeting. For example, we shared some language for another community that we had seen, we asked her to read that. She gave us feedback on that language, you know, told us what she thought would work and not work. She's been doing this thing where, because she's read so many of these. She's kind of repeating back language that's been accepted in other places and giving us some key phrasing to use. Helping us to understand what's been acceptable to other, to other cities and towns. So that I think would kind of be my best description of how those decisions are going.
And. The cost per planning commission meeting and public meetings, that's just over. It's not only for HCD related meetings, is it? It's just a general rule of thumb that you've developed or how, how did you come up with that?
The rule of thumb for a big community meeting is based on experience. So here in town, because our community meetings are large and well attended, usually about ten thousand dollars to put on one of those meetings and staff it. Specific to the planning commission number that I provided you tonight, that was more specific to this effort. And the amount of time it takes to complete the work, write the staff report, prepare a presentation and be ready and attend the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I met with Laura earlier, so I'm all set. Thank you.
I actually had one question, I'm just trying to do the math on this and I keep getting seventy nine thousand four hundred and sixty nine. Am I missing something?
Sorry, let me double check. Admittedly, I am not a math superstar.
Actually, now I'm looking at page one thirty one and it says seventy nine four six nine. Sorry, I just, I just want to make sure we get the right number.
Adrian, would you do math also and just make sure we're all getting the same thing? Okay, I'm getting seventy nine four sixty nine.
Okay, okay.
So I definitely made a mistake.
No, it happens. So I just wanted to make, I just, I saw the, okay, so those numbers, I just wanted to make sure we had the right number. Okay. Okay.
I, I could ask my same question, Laura. I don't want to horrify anybody by asking the same question. But is there any room for a resident of some sort, a committee member or planning commissioner? To attend any of these meetings so that they could actually hear what this process is like? I mean, they wouldn't, they could say they were just attending, they were just listening in. Is that ever, is that ever been done? Has it ever been useful?
I have never seen it done in my career. I think it would fundamentally alter the work relationship between staff and the consultant. I think if the council wanted to pursue that kind of thing, it should be something that you should discuss, you know, in a more robust manner. Because as we were kind of talking about earlier, the consultants have a certain role in terms of providing their technical information. And these meetings, you know, have a certain pace and cadence. And we're talking in a lot of shorthand and a lot of, you know, it would just really change the way we do our work.
Right, and so the actual question was related to HCD, whether there was any, whether there's any room for a resident to actually listen in on those discussions.
I would recommend not doing that.
Because?
Because it would fundamentally change the way that we do our work. It's, I, it's just, it's not how, you know, advanced planning and local government operates. And so I think we would want to, you know, have a discussion, a more robust discussion about what that means and what the roles are of the different parties. So, you know, a planning commissioner has a certain role in terms of reviewing policy that's brought to them in a public meeting. You know, through that forum, that there's already an established role in state law and in town practice.
Got it. I understand.
Any other questions? Not, and we'll take public comment. Karen, ask you as her hand up here, Karen, go ahead.
Hi, this is just a question for Laura. I, I'm curious with these meetings with the HCD reviewer, how many hours long is a typical meeting? Are you talking, when you're talking about a working session? I don't, well, just, I'm just, what's the answer? Thanks.
We'll collect questions and we'll come back to those again. Anyone else in the schoolhouse? Bob Adams, go ahead.
I don't know how we're going to do it. And this is really hard for me because Laura and I started out on opposite sides. And we're on the same side. And she's magnificent. And I don't know how we're going to do this project between now and January without you. So I thank you for all you've done. I don't know how to say it any better than. When you explain things to us, you take complicated issues and make it understandable. And then we can make an intelligent decision. And I think that's just a skill that. I hope we have somebody that can do something similar, but I haven't seen it. So between you and Cara, it's unbelievable loss to me. But I hope you do well and have a good place that you're going to. We're going to miss you. Thanks.
Any other hands here in the schoolhouse? Okay, I see none. On Zoom, Rita has her hand up. Rita, go ahead.
Hi there. Of course, I have to mention the budget and the finances of our wonderful town as we move forward. And I really hope that if there isn't resident oversight in these meetings. That there will be resident oversight on the finances associated with these meetings. I sent a letter to the planning commission and to all of the council. About how since March, out of the fourth, past fourteen planning commission meetings, eleven of them were canceled. So I guess we saved a lot of money in that process somehow, but work seemingly was done. But the safety element and other things didn't move forward. My concern on some of these slides is that there was some subjective language concerning the. Person that we're working with, with the housing element. And, and there was something else that was mentioned, and these meetings are recorded. That, that person that, you know, we're currently working with, the other person we're no longer working with, that was reviewing our documents. And now we're working with this person and there's some things said and perhaps that person is. Reviewing, you know, this, this recording. And, you know, I, I'd just like for us to, to change some of that moving forward. And I gladly talk to someone after this meeting, I don't want to spell it out, but I'll gladly talk to someone about this at a different time. But thank you, but I do believe that there should be some oversight on the finances and it should be coded so that we can review it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Phallus, stand up, go ahead, Dale.
Hi, good evening again. Thanks for taking my, my comment here. You guys are in a very tough position. And I recognize that, so take my comments with a grain of salt, recognizing that, that you're between the devil and the deep blue sea. Number one, I, I've spent millions of dollars in my career hiring consultants. But almost exclusively, those consultants were paid for performance. And I will say the performance of our consultants is negative. At this point, I am not sure that we are any closer to a good housing element than we were before we submitted the first one. So we're probably approaching a million dollars in fees to consultants and I find that disturbing. Number two, I am very alarmed by the statement that. Laura is saying they're sitting in a meeting with the reviewer and crafting language that will be acceptable. Based upon reading the last, you know, rejection. I am very concerned that we are going to end up with something that, that none of us is going to like. Even worse than what we already have. So I, I. I hate that, I really do. I hate being dictated to by an organization that I already feel is, it's outside their league and. And dictating terms to us. Those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dale. I see no other hands up on Zoom, anyone else in the schoolhouse? Okay, then I will bring it back to the council for discussion. Anyone want to start?
Well, rocking a hard place, that's for sure. You know, we, we don't have room in the budget. I think if Laura's timeline plays out the way she outlines ish. I'm willing to be optimistic that we can, we can hit the mark. I don't trust in that, to be honest, because of the variables outside of our, our control. And that concerns me greatly, but I don't see any. Way unless we do something fairly drastic, like say. You know, we're going to change the level of effort that we put in or take a different tack. We're building on something that we've already built. And I don't see any way of not moving forward to make this. To follow Laura's guidance here, I can't second guess the process. Our planning commission meetings actually add value from my perspective, so I, I don't have line items that I would change. So I, I don't see a great alternative and I do appreciate the work Laura put in. To lay it out for us and to give us the information about what we're choosing, but I don't see any way of doing anything else.
I, I, yeah, I agree, I, I don't, I'm not crazy about it, but I don't.
I agree with that.
Okay, nice.
So, so I certainly agree that it does feel like we're in a rock and a hard place. My longer sort of vision on this is. I worry about what this is pushing off, like the safety element and some of these other things. And, and so I know we have to do this, I mean, obviously it's state mandate. I worry that if this doesn't happen in November, but it happens in January and then the safety element happens and, you know, like, who knows? That at some point, we're going to have to start either pulling it in or maybe spending more money, but somehow we've got to get to the safety element. Like, this can't keep pushing everything else out of its way. It feels like this bulldozer right now. But everything else is getting delayed because of this. So I think the one thing I would like to see is that. You know, if, by the time we get to November, if it's not looking like we're wrapping this up, we need to start moving the safety element. And maybe that means that this takes another extra four months because we run this stuff in parallel. And maybe we're, you know, at risk of builder remedy, but at some point. We're going to be at safety risk and, and that's my concern is, and this is the rock and hard place, right? It's that we're, we're kind of running into, well, let's see, we can have building problems, we can have safety problems, we can have money problems. So yeah, it's starting to sound like it can't get a whole lot worse, but that would be my main comment is. For right now, yeah, I think this is the best we can do, but I do think at some point, we need to start moving on some of these other things. We just can't let this bulldozer keep pushing things out.
And that's happening partly just because we are so short staffed. And, and so I, I'm, I'm hoping that, that as we build up, rebuild the staff, we will, we will be able to do a few more things at the same time.
Yeah, sure.
It's not going to happen tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I just think at some point, we need to have our safety element as a priority bubble up and not. You know, because we've, we've always talked about, well, ideally, we would have done safety first, but. We had the housing element, had a deadline, had builder remedy, it made all sense. But now we're kind of getting caught up in the housing elements driving everything and that's, that's my only real comment, just for the future.
I mean, I agree with that. I have a large concern, I think I'm willing to see if that this timeline. Can flush out the way Laura hopefully, based on her experience thinks it can. But I, I would vote for, or not vote, but I would recommend that in November, we have a. A real good look at where we realistically are. And maybe have to make some priorities a little different at that point, but I, I think right now, I, I don't have enough information to do that.
Yeah, and that's, that's on seems right. I'm, I'm comfortable right now.
Yeah.
I just don't want this to be, and then, and then.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Question that's in my mind, is there a legal. Recourse for these unsuccessful mandated unfunded costs? And, and if so. Well, when do we start counting the millions of laws that are being foisted on us without getting solutions? And how?
Attorney, want to comment on that one?
Unfortunately, there is, I'm not aware of any. I don't think when you're sort of legislature and presenting this information to our local state representatives. But unfortunately, we're in the same boat as a lot of, a lot of jurisdictions who have spent. On this housing elements, multiple iterations. I'm aware of one, one sitting in the area that I think just submitted its fifth revision to HCD. With a, a very appointed cover letter, I would say. So yeah, we're, I, I'll, I'll see if Laura has anything to add to that, but I'm not aware of any.
And just to accumulate the data alone, like what percent of our budget is going to this? And how is it, is it less, is it more, what, what the intervals of increase that you see are? You're going to need to have that at some point to be able to present it to people.
I don't have anything to add to what the interim attorney has said. Except that, you know, something that is in the background of this is. Um, except that, you know, something that is in the background of this is that, um, the state laws are intended to force the hand of communities that have not allowed housing in the past. So the town's hand is being forced. And to a certain degree, that is intentional. And I know there's a lot of discomfort around that. Um, but you know, there are cities that are allowing a lot of housing that are getting their housing element certified. So it's not impossible to get certified, but it's very difficult to get certified if you are not coming forward with programs and sites and policies that will result in a lot of housing development. And so that's the path that the town has been on of trying to balance, you know, that development being, um, you know, having a very specific kind of appearance and feel and tone and density to meet the community expectations. But that makes it harder to get certified. And I, I know there's discomfort in that, but I think that that's the facts.
There is some discomfort around the subjective tone of it. And so that, that may be what you're reflecting. You know, that they like us, they don't like us, that kind of stuff. That feels very awkward. Not like you, like we, we, you won't be able to find a goalpost that we actually are getting to the number we're trying to meet. Or, and that that's the conversation.
Well, and I, maybe I can. Um, I agree that the subjective nature of it is difficult. Um, laws are always going to be interpreted. Um, these laws are not written very well in the first place, so the interpretation is very challenging. Um, and I know it feels like the gold coast is moving. It has felt like that for me too at times, of course. But we have to remember too, that we, there are certain things that the town changed between the first draft that we sent to HCD and the second draft. So it feels like their comments came out of the blue or they should have given us those comments in the first round of review. But actually they gave us those comments in the second round of review because the town changed its housing element, which then resulted in new comments. So there's a portion of the moving goalposts that I think is real, but there's a portion of it where it just feels that way. We, because we've all been working so hard and we're frustrated um, at this point in terms of the process we've been through.
Thank you.
I think, uh, in a motion on this.
Is it motion to approve the proposed uh, urban planning partners, uh, arrangement?
Contract amendment.
Contract amendment. I second.
Any other discussion? Uh, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Hefty. Councilmember Haskell.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Aye.
Mayor House.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Let me just add item for C D. Housing element post adoption.
Okay. So a couple of weeks ago, seems like maybe a month ago, we presented a slightly fleshed out version of the post housing element adoption plan. And it was turned into a study session when we got the HCD letter. Which was important to understand and appropriately got a lot of focus. And given how much is going on in town, uh, we understand that. However, uh, we did promise to bring it back for approval. And, uh, what we've attached here this evening is both a chart that's a little bit more bullet point in terms of laying out what the action item is, timeframes, which entity is it? The town council, planning commission, ad hoc committees, working groups, other. And then just general comments for context. But, you know, that's two pages long and the, the entire post adoption plan is not a ton longer than that. So Craig and I wanted to bring this forward for discussion for at least adoption in part. What this doesn't include, and appropriately, uh, we should pause before adopting it without this information is a budget for items that are what I'll call more extensive. Um, that things that require a lot of staff input, formation of ad hoc committees, uh, engagements, uh, with other, um, committees and commissions. So while I would love to be able to get this approved and hit the ground running with it, uh, taking a harder look at it to allow our budget process to catch up, so to speak, and be informed by, um, staff, yeah, who's going to be the right ones to tell us how much effort, like Laura's telling us forty five hundred dollars per planning commission meeting, that, that's very useful information. I would imagine we would benefit from knowing more about that when we, uh, approve some of these more extensive items. So, uh, Craig and I think that we, there's some items in here that we should get started immediately and that won't have of either a large sticker price for them or they're actually already ongoing. So the ones that I would highlight as being ripe for approval this evening would be formation of a town council subcommittee for action one point one, which is evaluate and propose sunrise opportunity sites. We're aware of some opportunities for properties in town that are coming up or may come up. And we want to have a subcommittee formed to go out and have exploratory discussions without a lot of, uh, staff input. The next one is already underway by staff, the T two zoning design review actions and related G P updates. That's not an add-on. It's just something that is going to happen. Uh, maybe the January timeframe isn't exactly the way it's going to flesh out with Laura's uh, discussion earlier, or maybe that's pushed a, a month or two. But nevertheless, um, that's ongoing. And I think we can just say that effort, um, that's going on for the zoning. Um, we can just say, yes, that's going to fulfill this requirement. Um, the one I'm not sure about, and I will ask Laura to comment on is T three point one, which is establish local sequel guidelines. We also have local thresholds. That's a bigger effort and that should come back for a budget review. Is the establishment of local sequel guidelines? And maybe it's a question for Catherine. Uh, is that something that we should stop and have a scope and budget for? Is that something that, um, is not a significant, uh, effort? Then the other two are T six, which is the development of a policy for inclusionary funds. We've already got that going, uh, in part. We do need to meet with staff and, uh, figure out, uh, how best to present that. But a lot of the work has been done by three committees in town already. And I think what would, we could probably do that without a significant additional effort. And the last one is the volunteers for the housing element information repository. In fact, that one and the first one go together. So I would strongly recommend we, at a minimum, get those off the ground and running. Just, uh, let the subcommittee get started and let's appoint, um, somebody to outline a mechanism to receive volunteers and to solicit them. And then, um, I'll stop there. We can, we can discuss as much as you want. Uh, the last point is just the timelines will also benefit timelines and budget from staff input. Um, uh, concurrently, uh, while they're looking at the budget for the larger items, we should pressure test the timelines. Um, none of this is something I want to park, but I want it also to be realistic and informed. Craig, any comments?
No, I think that's right. I, I think just we're trying to bifurcate the stuff that needs to get going because it's got deadlines on the other side. And then the sunrise is not going to magically keep slipping out year after year. It's going to be here before we know it. So that's, those are the things you want to get going on. And then some of the stuff, as you just said, is stuff we're already working on anyway. So we just sort of check in those boxes and saying, yeah, we've agreed. So, but I, I think that feels like the right set of things that we can start moving on. And then we can come back as we do some budget analysis to decide some of these other things and how much we want to spend on them.
Thank you. Uh, questions from the rest of the council for President Hudy? Mary, you have any questions?
Well, I'm, I'm a little confused. Are, are we going to, are, are you asking for approval of one and eight?
One point one to get to form the subcommittee only. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, T two is already ongoing and I think we could just tick the box because that's really the planning department's.
So not just T one.
One, one point one subcommittee only. T two.
You want to take those separately or you want to take them together?
Why don't we, we can, we can discuss that. I, I, I.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to lay it out. Yeah, I'm trying to get you.
But that is, that is an option. Yes. Sorry.
Yep. Three point one is a question. Um, we, we can discuss whether there's significant effort there. Uh, T six is the inclusionary policy, Mary, you and I work on. And then T eight.
So it's, it's really just one one.
One, one, T two, maybe three point one, T six, T eight.
Any other question?
I guess a question is, it sounds like it's on everybody's mind is Catherine, what is involved in T three one? Yeah, so this item is, um, establish local sequel guidelines per, um, guideline, state sequel guideline, section one, five, zero, two, two. Uh, and this relates to, um, so there are state sequel guidelines. Uh, that's sort of the defaults that agencies use if they don't have local guidelines. Um, there is an option for jurisdictions to adopt, uh, local guy, the local guidelines uh, that set forth procedures. So I've seen some that, for example, make it clear that when an applicant comes forward to, to the, to the city or the town for a project, uh, that requires some sort of environmental document, um, the applicant pays for that and the, and the city gets to select the consultants. That might be an example. It's in a, uh, another jurisdiction, the secret guidelines. I believe that's the practice here. It's just not written down. So, um, I, I, I guess I would, would want, um, you know, see if Laura had any additional input here. It really would depend on how extensive the changes are. Um, it'd be very simple to adopt local sequel guidelines that simply said, we use the state sequel guidelines. Um, so I guess the question is whether there is anything that, um, is in addition um, to the state sequel guidelines that we want to clarify. And that would maybe, I, I don't know if there's anything that is, has sort of come up in practice that would be helpful to, um, i- include, you know, clarifications for our jurisdiction here. So Laura, do you want to add to that?
Um, I agree with Catherine. It depends on the scope of what the council would want to see. I think my recommendation would be to go, um, pretty much on the simple side with this because the law sometimes changes and the guidelines sometimes change. So we would want to refer mostly to the state guidelines and then just have some things related to procedure, um, like Catherine was saying. So that way we could create a little bit more transparency around the process because I think that's part of the interest here so that people know, for example, that, um, when the town is the lead agency, we're the ones that contract with a sequel consultant. Um, some jurisdictions let the applicant, um, hire a sequel consultant and do their own studies. So we want to just kind of create some procedural rules, some transparency rules so that applicants and the public know what to expect and then mostly rely on the state guidance. So that scope of work seems, um, relatively limited, um, in being able to do it and could be something that could be accomplished. Um, but it would be primarily out of the town attorney's office. Um, the ability for planning staff to participate in that would be limited, I would think at this point.
So based on that, I don't. What we're looking for is whether it's okay to get started. And I think we don't have to decide the actual end product, but whether to proceed on the basis that it's minimal plus procedure. And we can either put that piece off to discuss a little bit later or just say, yes, let's see what that looks like. And then we can decide if that's, you know, assuming that's a minimum amount. I'd prefer to put more in the box of getting started rather than less. Myself, but that's up to others as well. Yeah. So I guess I have, um, you know, just follow up on that is how do we know what the cost of that is? And I guess also is that timeline realistic? If we don't know, well, we don't know yet. You know what I mean? January twenty fourth.
Yeah, I mean, I would say if this is a town attorney, um, item, um, my firm can do this. Uh, other jurisdictions have, have these, but it would, I would certainly want to coordinate with, um, planning staff. And, and fortunately, we, we have, um, you know, interim planning director replaced. Maybe who has worked on secret guidelines, local people that I've seen before, uh, to, just to, you know, make sure that whatever the town attorney is proposing actually makes sense from an implementation perspective. So you want to make sure there's a, there's a connection there. Um, so I guess, but as a first pass, I don't, um, I, I don't have any concerns with the January twenty twenty four week.
No question, sorry. Um, and then on T six, um, obviously really excited for this one to come forward and thank you guys for working on it. I see you have adoption in October of twenty twenty three, which is next month. I didn't know if you were planning on having like a study section or you're just coming forward with a recommendation and anticipating adoption in one meeting? Or what, what is your thinking on how we're going to approach it? So we've got input from committees. We've got an example for, um, we've got language that, that could be repurposed for our community to go from. So what I had been hoping was to work with staff to look at what they would recommend in order to set that up in the next week or two. That's the biggest thing on, maybe in my case, if it's, well, I don't want to speak for you.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, it's ready to. I think we, we reached the point where we were going to talk to Laura about it and that was right before we learned about the change. And so the question is whether we should go move ahead, move big? Or whether we should go, whether we should move ahead with Catherine? Whether, how we should move ahead at this point? We, we feel that we did our due diligence.
Yeah, it nee- it needs a discussion though. Um, certainly with Catherine and, and I.
Before we.
Anybody on the staff that I, I think is, you know, the appropriate person I'll defer to, should read to. Figure that out. As far as who on staff should be working with us.
Then Truett needs to give us direction.
Yeah.
But it does make sense that we have a, a study session about it too last year.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's the question. If you think we need to, then October is going to happen.
Right.
And I guess I wasn't, I, I, if I could rephrase the question, were you guys anticipating it bringing, bringing it forward and it being ideally a one meeting?
Yeah. That's what we were hoping for. Do we get guidance on that?
Okay.
We'll come back to that. There are no more questions than a public comment on this. Uh, anybody here in the schoolhouse want to comment on this item? See no hands up? Anyone on Zoom want to comment? Misty Corley, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to see T three one go through. Uh, the first thing that came to my mind is analyzing when I think of sequoia and safety and the environment. We had a tree go down and kill someone on Alpine Road. So how can we put in place that we want our trees evaluated on our main roads? That came directly to my mind. So please take care of, uh, things that are unique to our environment. Thank you. Um, and then volunteer, uh, housing element depository. I'm not sure exactly what that means, but, um, I would like to know how to get information on, um, conceptual reviews, preliminary reviews and applications rather than here. I did, you know, an application has not come forward yet. I think the public needs a way to understand those three concepts and get information on those. I think the public needs a way to understand those three concepts and get information on those three concepts. So if you, if that's what it means by a volunteer housing element input depository, that's what I would hope for. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised on Zoom. Uh, last call, anyone here? Okay, then we'll bring it back for discussion. So I, I, the intent for this was to sort of get these things, as much of it started as, as, as feasible. I want to make sure that we're legally, like in terms of just how we agenda, I think we were trying to make sure that we had some flexibility there. I just want to make sure we're on legal ground, so on firm ground to sort of give you, break a few of these things out and moving forward.
Yes, the, the agenda is a topic is broad enough, um, discussing, um, the whole plan, which was attached to the agenda.
Trudy, would you want to comment?
I may, if I may just comment on the housing fund policy, I certainly think it should move forward at this point. Certainly support that. Uh, where provides a little bit of hesitation is the October date. And so if this could be November as opposed to October, I think it's certainly feasible. I wouldn't want this to be a January item per se, but just because October is a couple of weeks away. If we could make that a November item, I think we can certainly work with, um, John and staff to come up with a recommendation.
Nothing, nothing bad happens in the substance of November, right?
Well, no, nothing bad if, but if we have a project we want to, that comes in, we just don't have the policy yet, but, but. Yeah.
It does. Okay.
Thanksgiving, what's our schedule?
Uh, we have one meeting in November before Thanksgiving, so I think that would be the target.
So we know what date it's going to be. We have a target date.
I don't remember. Second, second one.
Yeah, yeah, we have a, we have a date.
Sounds like we've got a lot of work done, so I think it's feasible. Okay, so the question is what things can we, what things are we ready to approve and move forward on? I think, um, I think, uh, the subcommittee, I definitely, I mean, we, we, this all started, I think, with trying to get the subcommittee appointed. So, um, I think we can move forward on that. And I agree that the repository question goes along with the subcommittee, so I think those two things for sure. And it sounds like we have a, I feel like we have a timeline in place for the, um, the exclusionary housing fund discussion.
So October would change to November.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just going through and trying to identify other issues. Um, so, um, I, I mean, are we moving forward on, on three point one, on starting with the sequel guidelines in January? It sounds like, it sounds like, it sounds like Catherine is comfortable with that.
So, well, I'll hold my commentary down.
Now, what else?
Two was the only other thing and that, you know, the timing should be whatever Laura's presentation had for that. But that's the zoning design review. That's except for January, January twenty four.
So we, and that's a, that's a hard deadline, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we have to have it.
Yeah, so that's actually okay.
What am I?
So that's, that's it.
Okay.
Can we do it the reverse way? What are we not including?
Uh, T one point two, the longer term planning efforts for future cycles, I probably wouldn't go with yet. Um, that will involve, will involve committee work.
And even one point one, there's pieces of that that would be posted on. The only thing from one point one would be the subcommittee formation.
And the local thresholds. So three point two, I think would be waiting for budget information, right? So that's a, that's a deeper process now. And the supplemental safety measures are, are, would start early next year. Impact, well, five point one, sorry.
So that is, um, something that we want to make sure we're understanding the incremental, uh, demand.
And you, you want to start it in November, right?
Uh, we had wanted to, but it does require a subcommittee and working group. So I think that needs to be budgeted before, you know, and if we're, if we agree on the principle, anything that's a major effort that requires budget, we want to understand more and confirm timing on that fault in that bucket. Insurance availability, same thing because we need experts to help us. I'm five two. Yeah. Yeah. And then T seven is, um, a longer term thing anyway. And if we want to have a working group and committees involved, we want to scope that.
Okay.
So just kind of, um, so, you know, T one, T one, one, T two, T six and, um, T eight I had circled as, you know, um, was felt totally ready, um, to move forward with. So I completely concur. Um, my question, I'd love to be able to move forward with pre one because it does sound pretty straightforward, but I'm just wondering. I, we don't know what the cost of that is. So is there a way to do it where we can at least figure out what the cost is and?
Well, well, here's one way of looking at it and it's one of many, which is assuming that we start in the direction that Catherine outlined, which is borrow from the state and add procedure around it, which Laura also said, and just see what that looks like. We're not agreeing today. We know what it is that we're getting to. So that amount of effort doesn't seem significant. Um, but anything, if we then get ambitious beyond that, we need the budget. That's how I look at that. What, what approach could be, I could bring back some samples. Which wouldn't take very much time. Um, and then get additional direction there with, and could come up with a budget estimate for, you know, doing the deep dive. Yeah, again, the interest is in starting and it's not necessarily promising. It's de minimis.
I think the only other comment I wanted to make in terms of comment versus question when I was looking through this. And I also want to say thank you for whoever created the table. It was very helpful. So thank you very much for doing that. Um, given my, um, work with the ADU working group, which was a great model for a lot of this stuff. Um, one, one, these are nits, but just things for you guys to think about and they don't need to be resolved at all right now. Um, you know, I see sometimes it says working group, other times small group of volunteers. I don't really know what the distinction would be there. Um, and then just thinking about, well, I, I, I guess, as I, as I shared with the ADU, that worked really well because the team of people that were involved and how disciplined they were about the process. Um, and I guess I would just say that, you know, that model worked because of that. And then there was also discipline on the town side. And so when I, you know, as you guys think about this after tonight and all the various working groups, multiple working groups, I'm assuming these are all different working groups that you're thinking of. So multiple different working, it's just going to be a lot of work to have multiple different working groups going on at the same time. So just some food for thought as far as that goes. And that's pretty much all I have here.
Okay, I'm going to suggest that we just start going down the list and kind of disposing of things or, or putting them off as, as, as warranted. So T one point one, I think the main action we could take would be, would be, um, nominating a subcommittee or naming a subcommittee. Okay, um, volunteers for the subcommittee.
Well, Craig, do you want to continue in that capacity or you want to hand it off?
Um, so I'd say if there's somebody else that's interested in doing it, I feel like I have plenty on my plate. But, um, if there's nobody else that's going to do it, then I certainly will.
Right, well, I'm interested, but I don't know.
I was going to point out that this is probably going to run past our terms. So, I mean, but, which is how we ended up on the, on the ad hoc housing in the first place. So I would suggest that.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
Which is a continuing way of hunting, but also I think the perceived of the practical consideration.
Yeah. Okay, so I would like to be on, uh, the subcommittee since I've been involved to date on these types of issues. Um, I don't feel that strong. We could take draws, draws, but.
I mean, I, I, I know the, I know the lay of the land that's in, that's in, and I know the people. No, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, okay, you're in.
Good for Mary.
Yep.
Okay, do we need to make a motion or?
Um, so I would actually recommend, um, I, but you asked me earlier how broad this agenda description was and I didn't realize we were talking about appointing a subcommittee tonight.
Oh.
Um, so I would recommend bringing it back on consent other next meeting. But I, but I hear the direction in terms of the, um, consensus.
Yeah. Okay, so that's. Uh, T one point two, we're going to, we're not starting on yet. Uh, T two, I don't think we're taking an action on because it's already sort of happening. Three point one.
Well, we're saying that the ongoing effort, yes, Mary?
Well, I was just saying that T one point two, if we're doing one point one, we're sort of doing one point two at the same time.
No, no, we're, all we're doing is trying to say what doesn't cost us money and what doesn't need, uh, a scope and a budget. So out of one point one.
Places that, that in eight years are going to be available, but we can find out about now and line them up at the same time.
That's why the subcommittee is supposed to go out and.
Like, but it's, that subcommittee would be doing that at the same.
As what?
As they're doing the one point one, evaluating and proposing, uh, opportunities.
There's only one subcommittee in one point one, right?
Well, I'm just saying that it would end up being the same subcommittee would be doing it. Uh, looking at, uh, planning efforts.
That. We, but that required, the ad hoc committee requires a lot more staff support and effort. So we want to, I want to get there, right? Right.
There's, there's a lot more to that one.
Yeah, yeah.
I also just, just in terms of processes, we kind of already agreed to the ones that we were moving forward with. So if we could just stick to that, I think it'll just make the whole process to make better.
So T two is already in progress. Uh, three point one, I think we've already.
Came up with a brush.
Have we given enough guidance to, okay. Uh, three point two is, is we're waiting on. T four, I believe we are also waiting on. Five point one, probably not just yet.
Right.
Okay, five point two, not yet. Uh, T six, it sounds like we're hopefully going to dispose of that in November.
Yeah. We want that approved.
T seven is, we start on that later and then T eight will be the, that's, the two of you will be charged with sort of going out and recruiting for that. The citizens too.
I will ask Craig to be available to help us organize the volunteers though, because he, I am not this IT person that can think about how to organize that. So we're going to need, it doesn't have to be, this was just a group of volunteers, so.
How do we, yeah, that becomes a third person.
Um, I, I guess I would hope that staff could help with IT needs, um, but I would, that'd be great, me to, yeah. Okay, not me personally, but others on staff. Okay, so maybe the staff can get back to Mary and I on resources available to help us figure out what the volunteers can do. Because the idea is just to get people who are very adept at this organizational approach to mine everything that's been produced in the, not everything, but the, the critical, most frequent sources of information and make them easily available.
Planning Director Russell has her hand up.
Yeah.
Um, I think that this might be a challenge without Craig's direct input. So in the conversations that we've had about this, um, he was kind of had a, a vision of this that, to be candid, staff didn't really understand. And so the way that this kind of evolved is that we staff organized all of our documents in the way that feels normal to us. And we understand the limitations of that, right? Because it's how we do things. Um, but I think he was looking at a fresh take of how to organize the materials. And so just meeting with staff, I can tell you staff's going to say, well, what's wrong with what we did? Because what we were looking for is a fresh set of eyes. So it's not really about IT capabilities. It's more about what is a different way to organize the material and think about it differently. And those are, those are two different, um, activities.
Okay.
Could, could Craig simply work directly with staff on the repository? Could we agree to that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be good.
Okay. That, have we, have we, have we, have we forced this one to death? Okay.
I just wanted just to exhaust it. I just, my understanding of the repository is it's very integral to the work of the Sunrise and all of the subsequent committees. And I just, I'm a little concerned about potential brown, like if, over time, could it become a brown issue?
So I, 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 I think this is a organizational structure. So in my mind, there's going to be room to leave, to say, these are properties and here are the issues. I don't need to know what that information is. I can just say, it goes under four point three. That's where you put it. So without getting into the discussion of what is four point three itself. So I, I think this is an organizational structure that this particular thing is referring to. So I'm pretty comfortable this can be done without Brown Act violation.
Okay.
I don't need to get into like, oh, who are you negotiating with and what, you know, property, you know, do you have discussions? Like that's not an organizational thing. That's, you know, an operational. If needed, but, but I, let's, let's start with, I will stay out of one dot one, which is, I think, your concern and I'm totally happy with that.
My concern, I'm just trying to think ahead about.
Yeah, no, I, I don't mean that you're, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you just wanted to make sure that we don't sort of, yeah, inadvertently create, yeah, conflict.
Or be limited in what you can get, you know.
Either way, sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, we have.
College memo from, from myself, um, uh, reporting back on the subcommittee of myself and council member Taylor. So you have in front of you in this packet, along with my short memo, uh, the evacuation plan. Uh, the purpose of this subcommittee was to basically sort of try to bring this plan forward, partly just to get it public, public, publicized quickly, uh, but also to bring it back to us for some consideration. So, uh, let's see, Craig and I met with the subcommittee from the EPC, uh, Randy, Randy True, Rob Young and Dale Fow. Uh, we, we went over some parts of this and we, and we agreed to bring it back here. I mean, there's a, you know, there's a couple of questions that we're bringing to you. Um, like I said, I, I, you know, we, we've just had discussions about whether it's, it's appropriate for the council to formally adopt this. We can discuss that, I think, or certainly not the priority to adopt it now. But, um, but I guess the, the important, I guess the, it, the, there's a, there's two things. One is we want to make sure that the public is, is seeing this and, and has access because there's a lot of valuable information in it. And the other is just what actions we can or should take as a council on it. Uh, certainly things in here that we should be mindful of and acting on that might not be the same as adopting the full plan. I'm going to start there. Um, the, uh, the fire marshal is here and it's also, uh, I guess we'll start. Craig, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, I, I think that's pretty good. I mean, the, you know, the general comment was, there's a lot of really good information here. But it also, I think it's a little confusing on who the audience is as a adopted plan. So I don't know if people, um, saw the public comment that, that pointed off to the Malibu evacuation plan. But that's sort of more what I had in mind. It's, it's pretty specific. It's like, here's what we're going to do. Here are the people that own it. And then maybe you put some of the, the other stuff in the appendices and, and that seemed like, I could imagine adopting something like the, the Malibu evacuation plan. Whereas I'm, have difficulty imagining of, of adopting this because it, it, it's, some of it talks about history. Some of it's opinion, some of it's, oh, we're going to do these things, which I'm not sure we're going to do. Whereas if you look at the Malibu evacuation plan, it's pretty clear, these are the things you need the sheriff to do. These are the things that we're going to do. Whereas if you look at the Malibu evacuation plan, it's pretty clear, these are the things you need the sheriff to do, these are the things that we're going to do. Um, and I, I think the information is basically in this document, I just think it needs to be extracted into a tighter form. And then I imagine there is something that we could adopt. Because I, at, at the end of the day, my hope is that we have an emergency, um, operation or not, what is it? EOP, um, is it? Yeah.
Emergency.
No, no, it.
Rating committee.
Well, right, but there, there's like an EOP, I, I forget the exact acronym, but it, it's, it's our sort of broad version and, and the evacuation plan goes underneath it. And we need to look at that as well, because it's this sort of pretty vague, fuzzy document. Um, so, I mean, I think this is all going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Um, but that's, that's my hope, is that we follow up, get this tightened up and get it, you know, get something that will fit. And then I, I think we're going to have to open up the larger issue of the EOP as well. But, but we don't have to, we don't have to go into that tonight, it's just.
So you, and so, and just, you know, you're reminding me, you're, you're talking about some reorganization of what's here. Did you, you're.
That, that's what I'm, I, I think that's what makes sense.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I, I leave that to the, the council to decide, but, you know, we've got, um, Howard went and talked to Don Mateo, who's part of the DEM um, about adoption, and he was like, I wouldn't recommend adopting it. And so, I mean, that brings pause to me when, you know, like, I think everybody says you're good information here, but they wouldn't adopt it. We got that same information from our attorney, and, and I think it's just about the structure. I don't think it's that some of the stuff that's in here is wrong. I think it's just a matter of getting it into a, yeah, kind of the how, if you will, or the process.
Nice, Claire, oh, go ahead. Okay, um, so if I'm understanding, well, let me know if I'm tracking correctly, is it parsing out the things that are under our actual control? And somehow adopting that, or, I mean, that's, that, my, um, basic thoughts about this was, there's a lot of different players here. And I'm not a lawyer, but I don't really understand what adopting necessarily technically means in terms of the council, and how do we adopt something when we're dependent on all these other agencies that are significantly bigger with bigger budgets than we have? So I just, I don't, I don't understand.
Yeah, so, so I think there are a few things that kind of talk about what other people are doing and how they're going to do it. And I agree that, like, we shouldn't be adopt, that's, they're going to do what they're going to do. But then there's other pieces, which is, we're expecting them to do X for us. And, and I think that's a legitimate, and if you look at the Malibu evacuation plan, it has, you know, like, here's what we expect, the sheriff's department. So, so, you know, and so I think there's a little bit of, it's reasonable for the town to say, this is how we're going to integrate with you guys. This is, you know, what you're going to do is what we're going to do. And so in that sense, I think it makes sense. When it gets into their processes and how they're going to run their process, that's the stuff that I'm with you, it doesn't, doesn't feel like that's up to us to adopt. Cause they could change that, I mean, that, they can say, oh, you know, we're, we're going to do it a different way, we've got a, a more streamlined way to do it. And, and that's fine, but that's because they're responsible for that anyway.
So if your contact at the DEM said, I wouldn't adopt it, what, what is, do we know what, like, why would we be doing something that is not a standard practice?
So Howard, and would, Howard went and, and called him up, um, so I don't, I don't. Don Mateo, who's the, at the time, he's retired, he just retired, but he was the director of the DEM.
What is the DEM?
It's. San Mateo County Department of Emergency Management.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, it used to be the, uh, OES, it's the off, Office of Emergency Services.
Yeah.
But it's one of the agencies that has a huge role in this, you know, and a countywide.
Yeah.
Well, secondhand. So like, why would we doing, like, that's some, I, from that, I'm gleaning, this is a not, that would be a non-standard practice to adopt it.
Well.
Is that?
So again, as Mary correctly says, it's secondhand. I don't think it's, uh, like adopting an evacuation plan, people, I mean, municipalities do that, that's a reasonable thing to do. I think he was just saying, you know, you had this very, and again, this is secondhand, so I need to be a little bit careful. The sense I got from Howard was you have this sprawling document that has lots of stuff in it. I wouldn't adopt it as it, so that was the sense I got back from him. But, but again, I want to be careful that I didn't talk to Don directly, so, you know, take that for what it's worth.
I have some language questions about it. I, um, I mean, we, we're talking about adoption, like it's, you know, it's when you're with a child. Uh, what is this adoption that we're talking about? Is this a legal thing? And then we're, on the other side, uh, we're talking about disposing of it. Uh, it's, it, to me, it's a, uh, it's a good working document, it's useful, it's a capital end user. Everybody who looks at it will learn something about where their risks are. It should be front and center on our webpage, on our website as our current working document. And we should be proud of the work that everybody finally did, working together, that it's been done. I, I, I would neither dispose of it nor adopt it, I would, I would propose it as, as our current working document on evacuation.
Yeah, and that is, I mean, that is, that was sort of the purpose of, of, and this is the purpose of the subcommittee, was to get this, bring this forward so that it is public.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I agree.
Put it on the, you know, as far as where we dispose of it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the question is just what, I mean, we, we actually have a, correct me if I'm wrong, we do actually have a legal, one of, I mean, we, we do agree to implement an evacuation plan. It's not clear what that means, given that we are one of four agencies.
Where, where do we agree to do that? That's in the litigation.
So seven plus, one of the seven plus thirteen.
I mean, you can start. You know, you don't have to get it right the first time, you just.
Well, and what I'm saying is that we, we've got this plan, which I agree is a, a great plan, everyone should know about, but there's also some things in it, to Craig's point, it, it could be reorganized and parts of it adopted and parts of it formalized.
That's, that's down the way.
Well, and that's, but that's the beginning, that's, that's, this is the first of those discussions. That's what we were trying to get at, is what, what steps do we start taking to take some of this and turn it into a practice, something that's formalized?
There's a lot that needs to go into, uh, because, uh, because we already have this EOE thing, that is really, uh, not being talked about, uh, being inadequate, it's, it's, uh, you know, nobody knows, I don't think anybody is aware of, that we have a committee, an operating committee for emergencies, and who's supposed to, uh, that's all in some kind of code. So I, I think this is a real good start to make us start looking at all those other aspects of it. So I, I think it should be, and I think you should say thank you.
Agreed, I absolutely agree.
They don't, they're not hearing that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a fair point. Um, so we've bled into discussion, so, uh, two things, I'm going to ask if Don or Kim wanted to offer any comments on this.
I, I do have some questions eventually, you tell me when.
Um, okay, go ahead with the question, sorry.
Okay. Uh, Catherine, do jurisdictions adopt evacuations? You, you cited, uh, Santa Monica, was it?
Malibu.
Um, but how did that differ from this? And because I still see that this is such a regional plan, and it requires input in layers of activity that are, even in Malibu, would not be in control of Malibu, right? I, I would imagine, I'm just positing what that might look like. So I don't know that I want to take one jurisdiction adopting an evacuation plan and say, we, we have a burden to adopt it. I certainly think it's an extremely valuable, um, tool, but can you explain that distinction?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give it my best shot here. I, um, I haven't seen the Malibu, um, the plan, so I can't speak to that specifically. Um, I, I believe it's fairly uncommon to have a single jurisdiction adopt an evacuation plan that's multi-jurisdictional like this one. Uh, because as you say, we can't force the hand of other agencies. I think it might be more common to actually enter into MOUs with other agencies for, um, you know, multi-jurisdictional aid, that kind of thing. Um, but yeah, adoption, you know, the term adoption does have some legal significance typically, you know, you adopt ordinances, but I'm not aware of any legal authority, um, uh, requiring, you know, the adoption of this plan, uh, but of course, there's nothing, nothing preventing the town from making it front and center on the website and using it as a tool, um, to educate folks, uh, the community, and allow it to be a sort of living, breathing document that can be, you know, included upon.
Because an adoption of an ordinance means that we are making law and, and for the jurisdiction. But a plan is not the law, like, i- it's, it's a coordination effort to me, that's how I think about it. So I would actually like to know how common is it to adopt an evacuation plan? That, I now have comments later that go more towards, I think it was great, but, um, but let's not feel the burden to do something that, that maybe we don't need to do it, or that most jurisdictions don't, but let's make sure we know where we are in the spectrum of, of that treatment.
I don't, I don't have that, um, that information.
Of course.
Other, other questions? Uh, Don or Kim, I mean, not required, but if, do you have any comments, did you want us to plan on this? If, if you don't mind, come up with the microphone, sorry. Folks, folks at home will want to hear you.
We discussed it a little bit, and, um, I see, I see the, the town council's point where it's kind of designed for several different audiences, the way it's designed right now. The information is in the plan, I think it's a good thing to get out to the residents so that they start getting some awareness, they understand how we operate under the, uh, incident command system, and how, how everything kind of comes together. I also understand that maybe we now start, need to look at other, uh, municipalities, Malibu, what is their plan like? And then talk to them down there about extrapolating the information that we have in there that we can put into a plan that can be adopted. And then look at other, you know, other cities throughout California, and what are they doing? I, I think that's a good thing to do. So that's, you know, that can be done, I think, fairly quickly. If we, you know, put our minds to it and start looking at what, what are the protocols that Malibu followed? What, you know, did they go through FEMA, what did they use to, to come up with what they have? I think that's something that we can do in the next steps. But I think right now it's important that people understand what goes into an evacuation and what's expected of them, and what's expected of us when, when something goes.
Yeah. Woodside, you're our partner in evacuation. To this, how should we play this out with them? Should they, should we, should we have a parallel, should we have a joint meeting, should we?
With Woodside Fire?
No.
Oh, with the town, the town of, oh, so the, I'm currently, right now. We are, so I've already, I've already approached their EPC, and they're currently working on basically the same plan that you have. They're working on it over in Woodside, so it's going to be concurrently the same, the same. The only thing different would be, of course, you know, that their evacuation routes are going to be different, and, you know, maybe some of the phone numbers that they call and the agencies that they look to, but otherwise, it's going to be an identical plan.
So I, I have a dream, and I don't know if it's for anybody else, but you have a joint meeting with Woodside, uh, to solidify the evacuation.
No, I think it's a great idea, yeah. I would support it a hundred percent. I think it's, I think it's what we should do, because we're so closely connected.
Yeah.
In, in so many different ways, yeah. And overlapping too, so I think it's important that we do that. Well, I, I would rather work off of one plan than three different plans.
Make the whole thing work.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions for the fire marshal?
No, I was just going to add, so EAP is what I was looking for, it's an emergency action plan, I couldn't quite remember this. It's getting late, it's been a long day for me. So anyway, so E, EAP, and, and that's basically got the emergency evacuation, I think it's part of California code. When I did a quick Google search, it's, you know, thirty-two twenty, but I'm not sure exactly, you know, of the general industry safety, so I'm not sure quite how that fits in the council. But we have an EAP now, but it's this pretty vague document. So, and again, if we're going to focus on safety, I think this is one of those elements that is due for cleanup. And I think the evacuation plan is kind of a first step toward that larger EAP.
No, no, I, uh, just for everybody's information, you, you're aware that there's a, this code. To what extent is this emergency operation plan that we adopted in two thousand and seventeen affect you guys? Do you, are you even aware that we have a municipal code, uh, chapter, uh, two twenty-four that governs, uh, our emergency operation?
Is that where the disaster preparedness team is supposed to come out of?
I think that's one of the.
That you were talking about, Craig? I know you have an emergency operations center and you have a staff to operate that. Is this different?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of it. Two thousand seventeen?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look it up.
It's the chapter two forty-four.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is, how have you been involved in the plan or interacting around the plan?
So I originally was tasked with coming up with a template for the towns back in two thousand and fifteen. And so, um, I got the template from FEMA and provided it, and provided the evacuation routes, drew up the evacuation routes. And then the rest of the plan was supposed to be filled out by the two towns. And so that never really happened, so when this came up with the evacuation plan, I worked with the, uh, with the EPC. And what we did is we boiled it down to suit a small town like Portola Valley and Woodside, and this is what we came up with.
So you've been an integral part of it. And, um, and do you have a strong feeling about adoption or, you know, making it available to me seems the most important thing? But tell me if.
I think right now, in, in its current form, I think it's really important to make it available to the residents so that they start learning about how an op, how these operations work, what's expected of the residents, what to expect if their children are at school. It's all written into the plan. Uh, but I think it needs more work, like you stated, for adoption. And, and I don't think it's a lot of work, I think a lot of the information is already in there, but we need to make it for one audience to understand how everything works and what's expected.
To me, and tell me if this is wrong, it doesn't seem like an either or necessarily either, you can have the big overarching plan and then drill down to more specific tasks that are, uh, that assign to different patients of the town, um, governments, right?
Right.
Okay.
Specifically, the EOC is going to be very much involved with that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for the fire marshal?
You, you refer as promulgating, promulgating it, putting it forward.
I am, yes, have been a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. I don't think anyone does. It's, it's hard to find. I'm not sure how to fix that, but. It is on the website, but that doesn't mean it's really difficult to find, it's just true. Okay. No, thank you. Yeah, no, I think it's great, I was, just, we need to broadcast it, I agree. Okay. Okay, I'm going to move on to public comment. Dale Fow is just hand up on Zoom, and I will point out Dale was one of the co-author, or one of the, one of the subcommittee in the EPC who worked on this plan, so Dale, go ahead.
Uh, yes, good evening, thanks for taking the time to review this plan. I'm sure you're aware this took hundreds of hours of work by a lot of folks. Uh, and I want to make one clarification really quick. Craig mentioned Don Mate, Don Mate, uh, was on his way out the door during most of the writing of, of this plan, and really didn't have much interaction. We dealt with other members of the DEM, as a matter of fact, Dave Cosgrove, who was part of the DEM and, uh, was at the public, the special meeting of the EPC when we took public comment on this, said he was involved with writing and disseminating many evacuation plans and thought this was one of the best he had seen. And so it does have the support of the, of the DEM, uh, Domate notwithstanding. Uh, so that's number one. Number two, uh, this is a comprehensive plan, and maybe you don't like that, but what it does do is it defines everybody's responsibilities, it lets everybody know what's going to go on in, in an evacuation. We felt that was actually quite important, rather than having something that's only trivial, uh, we think. Uh, we think our our population in Portola Valley is very educated, very smart, and they'd like to have all of this information. In one place, and so that's why it is what it is. Uh, and as a, as an aside, just so you are aware, yes, the town does have an, have an approved. EOP or Emergency Operations Plan. It is completely non-functional, out of date, and because of the way that the, the EOC. Would have been staffed uh under our prior town manager, we could not open the EOC under the EOP. If we had to, uh, because there's nobody left who's trained. Uh, on the EOC and we quit training uh EPC members a couple, three years ago. So we have a big hole from, from an emergency standpoint, an emergency operations plan that needs to be. Completely redone uh to get that back up to speed. Uh, I personally would recommend that this council adopt, if you don't like the word adopt. Then maybe you can use the word accept. This plan, I think it's very important, I think it's, we need to get this information disseminated and it needs to be part. And just so you're aware, the, the template that really is nothing. Was referenced, is referenced significantly in the safety element, and I think it was even referenced in the uh, uh, in the housing element. Uh, and so at least we would have something that be accepted and you could. Uh, do it as a placeholder for the time being, thank you.
Thanks Dale. Uh, I see no other hands in Zoom, um, Rusty Day has his hand up, go ahead.
Thank you, I, I'm, I rise to uh. Set expectations, I want to try and help the council. Set your expectations about what you're looking for, this is not a criticism of the plan. And you don't need to adopt it, you need to publish it, that's all you need to do, publish it. But let everybody know that you don't accept it because you want more. We need a lot more, this is just the beginning. Dale started to talk about that, but let me, let me illustrate some of what I try to mean by this. This is a publication of information. It's not a plan. It doesn't tell us what we're going to do when an emergency happens or how we're going to grapple with it, it doesn't tell us whether we have adequate evacuation routes or they need to be widened. It doesn't tell us how we're going to notify people to evacuate when PG&E turns off the power and the internet doesn't work. To have a plan, you have to anticipate what is going to happen in a real wildfire. What SHT is going to hit the fan and leave us. Completely confused in the dark with no communications, what are we going to do? That's a plan. That's the beginning of a plan. And I urge the town council to understand that and set that expectation. Because when a fire starts here. And the sky goes dark. And the communications go down. And everybody's confused. And they're grappling and panicking, and that's what happens in a wildfire, what are we going to do? We're going to rely on our muscle memory, have we practiced what we're going to do? Do we have a siren in town that tells us with two blasts, you go north, one blast, you go south? No, have we taught people that? No. Just putting up a siren, as Lahaina proved, doesn't work because they all think it means tsunami. I mean, these are the realities that we confront here. And you, as the leaders of our town. Need to step up and set an expectation for what we need to do to get ready. To evacuate this community. When a wildfire, if you read the ordinance. That you just passed tonight in the findings, you saw that a wildfire can move through here at eight miles an hour. That's from here to Woodside in an hour. We can't evacuate this town in an hour. What are we going to do? So just publishing a document that says, well, you know, the sheriff's going here and the fire department's going there. And this is their number and that's their number, and no one's going to go to the school to pick up their kids. Come on, we're not ready. But you can help us get ready by setting a high expectation for what we can and need to do. Fund it, staff it, get the priority set. And assign the people to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Nan Shostak has her hand up, Nan, go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, I would like to second. Uh, and support what Rusty was talking about, um. Geological Safety Committee is very concerned about the special and. Potentially catastrophic um scenario of wildfire after an earthquake, so earthquake. With wild, with fire following, which is a very common occurrence after earthquakes. And we would like to see some very specific language about. What can be expected after an earthquake with wildfire, what, what the special considerations are for evacuation? Because it becomes far more difficult after an earthquake if the roads are not passable. To have a successful evacuation. And I think that. Um, you know, if we're going to get specific about what we're going to do in an evacuation, that um situation needs to be treated. Uh, very carefully and very comprehensively. Thanks.
Thanks Dan. Carolyn Vertonghen, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank everybody who has been working on this. Endless hours, endless years, I guess. Um, and I hope that the town council will um follow up on the recommendations of. Both Nan and um Rusty Day who just recommended. It's not enough to just have a brochure and publish it. We need expertise, we need to train, we need to actually do it, thank you.
Thank you, Christie Corley, go ahead.
Yeah, I just remember that um when you had your priorities for the town council. I remember safety was number one. And this has to be number one. I remember two to three years ago sending you um Tahoe Donner's evacuation plan. And I've sent it around uh to council members, to committees, and. They give it their best effort and. Yes, we need to refine it, but we also need to get something out to our residents, we have thirteen gates. That residents don't even know about, they should know about it. So, you know, if I'm at a friend's house, I want to know the closest gate to get me out of here if a fire was. Starting and I'm on Alpine Road, I can hear every. Fire truck go past, so please, please. Make safety a priority, thank you.
Rita Combs, go ahead.
Hi, a few years ago, we did a test about evacuation uh that was organized by a couple of residents. And I remember the pushback on the PV forum and in the community and even from um some of the staff. In the office, in the town office saying, oh, don't do this, we're going to do one in October. We're going to have one ready then, we're going to have one ready whenever. Uh, that could be four years ago, three, four years ago. And it is now September thirteenth, twenty twenty three. So the sooner we do this, the sooner we can figure out ways to save ourselves, help our neighbors. Uh, save, come back and get our children or or whatever, but um, you know, thank you for everyone that's been putting the effort. But we've got to test it out and then we've got to move it forward, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I don't see any other hands up on Zoom, last call, anyone here? Okay, um, so. Bringing it back for discussion. Um. I think the one thing that we were asking for, Craig and and I were asking for was to continue our work as a subcommittee on sort of these various things. With that. Um, and I guess the, the second question is just what? What comes out of this that you, I mean, what would you like us to do?
Is part of that, what action are we taking um because I'm, is, is that part of what you want?
Potentially, yeah, yeah, I mean, we, I mean, we talk about what we want to take in action right now, other than, I mean, other than obviously publishing.
Yeah.
Broadcasting this, that's, that's a start, I agree, but then there's just, like, I, I mean, in my memo, I said, what, what is implementing, you mean, what steps do we want to implement? And maybe that's just a.
Yeah. I mean, go ahead.
I have an impression that it is, does accept have legal, specific legal implications? Can we just say we accept and appreciate the work of the uh?
Yeah, I think, I, I think either that works, the recommendation from the uh subcommittee looks like it was to receive. The plan, uh, which works.
What?
I see the recommendation of, from, on the memo is to uh receive the draft plan, yeah.
Do we think that means anything different than it's got?
I don't think it does.
And did, does the subcommittee feel strongly on that?
Um, I do not, no, I mean, like I said, this is, it's, there's a lot more work to be done. And I want to make, I just, I wanted to check in with, I wanted to check in with all of you and just. Make sure it's okay for us to communicate the work, but also think about if there's specific things you want to see done from there.
Yeah, I, I think, I think for me, um, that, that wording doesn't matter. What does matter to me is this isn't evacuation. Like, it just doesn't feel like a plan to me, and I, I'm, you know, in line with Rusty, I mean, a plan is, here's what we're going to do. This is a lot of, like, this is the evacuation information. A- and that's fine, that's what it is, and and that's the thing I think we should publish, because I totally agree that this is valuable to our community. Understand all this information. I struggle with calling it a plan because it doesn't feel like a plan to me. And so that's, that's really the struggle I'm having, whether we accept it or receive it really doesn't matter to me, it's more. Just being clear that this is information right now and we need to do more, we need to then turn this into a plan, start making this stuff action.
So can we agree to do a better job of publishing it because we know it's hard to find? And authorize the subcommittee to continue the work towards the direction that you just articulated? Well, including, including um. As you mentioned, you know, researching the Malibu. Learning more about why that was something that could be adopted. So it's both the actionable aspects of a plan as well as looking at precedent of plans that have been adopted.
Yeah.
So, are we going back to the first?
Shree, one, just a recommendation, I certainly um. Like the wording of we see. For that, um, I do believe we should say receive and publish. Make it clear that we're receiving this and publishing it, and then just with the understanding that we can work on the title of plan, which is. So this is a working document, but we're getting the information out, so for staff, we can certainly receive and publish.
Can I ask why receive is better than accept?
I think it's just semantics, really, I, we're, we're accepting it, we're publishing it, so whatever council's comfortable with, I think just staying away from the word.
Oh.
I think makes it clear, right, we're not adopting the plan, we're saying, we're receiving it, we accept it, we want to publish it, get it out there. And it's a working document, subject can change, the title can change, if it's not a plan, maybe it's guidelines or information.
Okay, um, I think you guys should continue, this is step one of, I think, what. There's going to be many, maybe you don't want to do more than the next step, but, but there's a lot to do here. Um, mainly to respect the enormous efforts of the people who pulled this together. Because I don't think it makes much difference to what we actually say, other than not adopt. Um, I would actually say accept because I, I think. On a non-logical level, to me, that's like more embracing it and and appreciating the, the amount of effort. Um, but either would, would be accurate in my mind, so if people felt very strongly. Um, I could go either way, but I, I think accepting it and publishing it and. Really trying to socialize it, um, can we? You know, have some printouts and, I mean, I, I'm not into wasting paper, but. Some people are going to want a copy of it, um, can they be here, I mean, just. Over-socializing it, um. Sending out links to it uh would be great, and then I do take. The points that um very seriously, that this doesn't really give you a recipe for how to evacuate, there's got to be. I think as Rusty said, muscle memory, uh, people have to know automatically without thinking about it. And that's going to take a long time, a lot of education, so I think, you know, how do we get from where we are today? I think this is a coordination overview or something uh rather than a plan, but I, I don't feel strongly about what it's called either, I, I. Just think we've got to view it as step one. And an, an inclusive step one that should be refined and tailored for. What we would do in a bad situation. So that we can be very practical about it, and identifying the holes, if we really have things that are not functional. Um, I'd like to know what those are and and have them brought up, or how do we, how do we fix that?
So I have two comments, I mean, maybe we could call it the evacuation overview, because that's what it feels like to me. And the other piece that I would hope direction we can get from the council is to work with the fire department, because part of what we've agreed in our seven plus thirteen. Is to have this evacuation plan, at the moment, I don't know what that means, so I, I, I'd like to work with them. So that we can have a clear understanding, so that we can deliver on that promise as well.
I know, that's a great idea.
My idea about, of working with Woodside so that we have one evacuation plan, that, so we can all get out of here. All right, and I, and I, and I would offer myself as a committee of one. Uh, to uh reach out to some of the members of, of the Woodside uh, uh, town council and see if they would be interested in.
Well, that's, I mean, I think, I think Craig and I could probably do that as per, I mean, I, I certainly, we should, we should make sure our plans or or overviews look similar. And I'm sure that, I'm sure the fire district did that, so it's a point I'll take.
I'm still angling for a joint meeting. A joint town council meeting, because I think we have safety issues of all different sorts, earthquake. Fire, evacuation, all these things are all our joint. Yeah, share the same exits.
Is that enough direction or?
I think that's enough direction.
Sounds great. I guess it's up to you.
How about just an affirmation?
Well, I think, I think we've pointed to a consensus here, so I mean, I'm.
It becomes an affirmation. It's a consensus.
Right.
We have direction to publish in a more um visible location. Is that, just to be clear though, is there also a, does this direction to retitle the document at this point?
I, I would, I, why don't we, why don't we think about that as part of our? I'm not sure what to call it yet, honestly.
Uh, yeah, I, I, yeah, I didn't, you know, like overview feels better to me, plan. I, I just don't like plan, because it doesn't feel like a plan, i- if there's another word, I, I, I don't feel strongly about a different word, so we can either work on it or. If the rest of the council has a better suggestion, I'm.
I guess what I was going to offer is. The, those that did the work might want to chime in, on what the alternative name is, and I am more than happy to authorize you guys to work with them to come up with a name. Yeah, I, I agree, I want to respect all the work that they did and make sure they're comfortable. All right.
So staff will wait until. So staff will wait to hear from you regarding what the title is before we publish?
Um, well, I think we should, and I think, I think we should publish this, what we have right now.
I think it's totally fine, we can change. It's a working document.
We're thinking about it, it's not really the plan, but.
Sounds good.
We'll live with that, because it's more, the information just is important to get out.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay. We'll move on to uh liaison committee and regional reports, I don't see any in the packet, anyone want to report on a.
I'd love to give.
Coming.
Yes, thank you.
You guys, thanks so much.
We'll be here all night.
I'd love to give an update about the Hawthorne. I'd love to give an update about the Hawthorns. Um, I, I didn't type it up, and I should have, and I'm sorry. Um, and I will follow up with Karen, because she, um, has left. But essentially, PODAG, just to clarify, so everybody knows, PODAG is a public access working group that they've created. There are thirteen voting members. I am not a voting member, I'm a liaison. Um, so just to clarify what was stated earlier, and that we do have two residents in Portillo Valley proper on that committee, and then two that are in Los, Los Trancos.
Um, and those residents are voting members?
Yeah, they are voting members.
Who is it?
Uh, the voting members are Karen Vatra and Helen Quinn.
The bright.
Charlie Trent and David Snarenow. Um, and that there are, uh, gonna be from six to seven total PODAG meetings. We just had the second one. It was a tour of the site. All the meetings are public. There's nothing happens that's not public. There are no smaller group meetings that are just for Portillo Valley residents, because these are public lands of the state, and so it's, no. There's, there's voting members from San Francisco and San Jose. It's, you know, that kind of thing. Um, there is an important meeting coming up on, um, it's the third meeting, it's on October twenty-sixth. I highly recommend people who are interested to attend that meeting as members of the public. And, um, also wanted to inform people that the former town manager did create an ad hoc committee of, of, of seven members from seven committees of the town. It's a committee that is under, it's a town manager committee, not a council committee. And those, uh, there's somebody from Open Space, Nature and Science, Historic Resources, Trails and Paths, Conservation, Bicycle, and Parks and Rec. And the, um, task of that committee is to be a communication liaison, and they don't get special ass, access, they don't get additional meetings. We're all kind of in the same boat and the same process and the same meetings. So I just wanted to, and Corey is the staff contact for this, and, um, I have encouraged her to, um, make sure that group, there are seven numbers, it's not, they're not a Brown Act group, they can meet to, um, what I have recommended is that each of these committee members are working with their respective committees to get input, and then they can come back to this group together to synthesize the information in advance at the October twenty-sixth meeting. So I just wanted to share, I think that's the process. No, it's a Hawthorne's PODAG meeting. Yeah. And it's a ten-year process, so, for one point three miles of trails. So we think we're slow.
And, and is that the one where the parking will be discussed, or why is that one important?
It's important because it's the design, so it's everything from trail access to parking to, um, road access, so it's, it's an important. Yeah.
So can I just suggest that we promote size at that meeting, like, put it in the town newsletter?
Sure. But it is the role of this ad hoc committee, and I'm happy to read the names of the people who are on it, to be the communication. That was the intent of that group. It's Betsy Morgan Taylor, Brooke Coffey, Patty Dews, Fred Leach, Paul Heipee, Pat Baynan, and Karen Askew.
This is the ad hoc committee, which is.
Right, it's a manager.
The ad hoc Hawthorne's committee?
No.
No, just an ad hoc committee, period. Okay.
Under the town manager. And then there's the one that Sarah's liaison to, which is an official mid.
I, I do know the M R O T, but this is the.
Okay, so then.
Well, any other liaison?
Yes, so, um, EPC meets, of course, right after our deadline for this meeting, so I apologize. The only thing I was gonna add was that Karen Vata did come to that meeting just to point that stuff out, and just making sure that as this proceeds, that the evacuation, the implications to evacuation get folded into this process. Um, and whether it's through the evacuation subcommittee on EPC, um, yeah, I, I don't know the right mechanism, but I just, you know, it sounds like we've all heard it now multiple times, but that's certainly an important piece of, of what's going on. Um, and then the only.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, you're saying related to Hawthorns?
Yes.
Okay, because it's interesting, we don't have EPC on that ad hoc.
Okay.
Karen Vatra is not a vote in PODAG.
Right, well, she just, but she's not on EPC. She just came to EPC to say, hey, by the way, guys, this is what's going on. So I, I would suggest to the town manager that we add EPC to that group, um, to make sure that we have evacuation covered. I think that would be important. Um, and then the other thing was that the AM radio, uh, is relocated back to the town center. It wasn't a private residence. Um, and maybe in the future, if we get lucky, we might be able to talk to Cal Water, but that's gonna be a long haul, um, just because, you know, different jurisdictions, et cetera. But at least for the time being, it's, it's back down to town center.
So I have no, um, you know.
May I ask the town manager?
Yeah.
Would there be other liaison reports?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna, I put on my net.
Uh, town manager.
All right. I do have some written comments from my first, uh, town manager report. Thank you. Thank you for the warm welcome. I'm very excited to be here and grateful to be here, and had a chance to get to know all of you a little bit. Um, I'm looking forward to connecting with all of you in the community and working with council on all of our shared goals and priorities. I believe today is my ninth or tenth day on the job, so, um, I've learned a lot so far. Um, and, uh, connected, I think, with a lot of staff and looking forward to sitting down with them even, even further. One thing that's clear for me is, one of the main focuses, and I mentioned this even in my interviews, really getting our house in order, if you will. And there's, there's no sugarcoating, a sixty percent turnover rate in staff from beginning of January. Um, and we also have four vacancies or soon-to-be vacancies with a staff of fifteen, so you're looking at a twenty-five percent vacancy rate. Not significant, and that means, that means, um, pause, and it needs, um, work to get us up to snuff, if you will. And so my message to council and to staff is that it's not business as usual, we cannot get everything done. Um, and so we have to focus on our core services, our core activities, and it's all hands on deck. And so things will look a little bit different in the coming weeks, in the coming mon, months, but I'm, I'm confident that we get back up to full staffing level and, um, back to full services, if you will. And so my mantra for myself, my mantra for staff, has been reset and refocus. Right, it's on my whiteboard in my office. We need to reset and we focus on what we do, um, as staff. Um, a major priority of mine will be obviously getting us caught up on finances. That's been very clear since day one. It's been clear when I did my research for the town of Portillo Valley, is that, um, I'm working very closely with Starla and Cindy to get us up to snuff. And, um, we have to finish our year in close, we have to finish our audits, we have to get up to speed. And I'm bringing in additional resources to have some accounting, um, folks in here to get us caught up. And we cannot, I cannot make informed decisions on where we need to go on major initiatives such as um, our sheriff's contract, our revenue generation, our housing element, fire prevention. All these things have huge fiscal impact, and in order for us to make some, uh, real informed decisions, we have to have a plan in order. That's almost priority number one, besides getting our house in order, is getting our finances caught up. And, um, Cindy is certainly welcoming the support, and with Starla on board as well to get it caught up with that. I'm also, um, really, um, a champion of maximizing funds where we can. And so really looking forward to working with, um, George Savage, Bill Urban, all the folks that you know on our finance committee, and really looking to maximize our funds very soon, and cutting a million dollar check, for instance, and getting that um, into a spot where we can maximize our, our revenue, and then working on the, the details after that. And so really looking forward to working with finance committee. I met with George Savage, and we're definitely in lockstep, where I think we wanna go as a group. Once again, I wanted to just, uh, take the time to thank Laura Russell for all her work in the being of her last, uh, council meeting. Her leadership, her work ethic as a planning director has just been very evident. She did not have to do all the things that she's doing as an outgoing employee, as an outgoing director. It's very important for her that she has a very good handoff, and I think we're in good hands with John Biggs, recognizing he's interim, temporary, and he's not forty hours a week, he's not fifty hours a week, sixty hours a week like Laura was. So really wanna thank Laura publicly for all of her work, and she has definitely made a lasting impact to Portillo Valley, and I think we're, we're better off as a town because of Laura. Um, I'm looking forward to meeting with as many members of the community as I can. I'm here to listen and to support our staff. I'm only as good as our team, right? I'm only as good as, as, as our, our employees, and, um, I'm thankful to the executive team, their dedication to the work that we do. And staff are tired, and the only thing I can offer staff is that we're gonna bring in more resources, bring in more help. And part of that expectation is, don't be surprised if I come back in a month or two or three asking for more resources. And that, you know, includes a fiscal impact to that, to get it up to a different standard, um, and where we need to be. So I'm excited to be here, lots of challenges, but I do think that we can get through them together and, and really make a impact on what we need to do. And so I'm really focusing on what's our core activity, what can I make an impact in tomorrow, next week, next month, as we move forward. And so I think the last thing I, I put on here was my very first executive order is I'm gonna get some new microphones. And so it's very hard to hear on the, on the video side, the sound, and so a simple win, I think we'd be good at some new microphones moving forward.
Very popular.
You know, where I can make an impact, so I'm sure you get a lot of, I'm nodding heads with that. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Question? Okay. With that.
Is Laura here?
Uh, no, she's not on. Oh, uh, public comment, uh, Rita Combs, go ahead.
Uh, well, the new town manager, welcome to our town. I am so happy to hear, you know, I, I looked up your financial background and excited for you to come to our town, and, um, and thank you for, uh, for making finances a priority, because I, I just, as you probably heard tonight or learned tonight, that we can't move forward without getting our house in order. Everything we buy puts us more and more in a hole when we're not understanding how we're gonna be paying for things. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Um, I see no other hands up, so, um, I believe you can adjourn.